Welcome back to our special meeting, October 6th, for reviewing our zoning code. We'll start off with the roll call.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Westman?
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Here.
Commissioner Newman?
Here.
Chairperson Welch?
Here. Now we'll go to Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. We'll start off with oral communications. Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have a continuance request for the wireless chapter of the zoning code update that was submitted by Verizon. They did submit a letter with some legal issues that the city attorney has been looking into, and we would concur with their request to table that item until next month. As part of that, they've agreed to -- we do have our settlement agreement with dates, deadlines established. They've agreed to give us additional time in light of their request for the continuance.
Okay.
And then I also did want to follow up with the planning commission on a request. It was either the last meeting or the previous one regarding vacation rentals. The planning commission asked a couple of questions that I've had a chance to confer with the city attorney about. The first was whether or not the planning commission's action to consider adding a few properties on Capitol Avenue to the zone would present any legal risk. City attorney's opinion was that it would not because they would have no standing to challenge our ordinance, which has been in place for many, many years. By virtue of us adding something to it, the ordinance itself, that statute is long past. So he didn't think there was any legal risk with the planning commission's actions. There was also a question regarding requiring business licenses for vacation rentals. The city attorney confirmed what we believe, which was any rental business technically is a business. The city could require a business license for any rentals in the city. That's not been our practice, and, you know, I think from a staff perspective, we think it would probably be very difficult to monitor when does somebody move out of a rental or start renting their house. The one issue the city attorney did have was if we were to require a business license for rentals, we'd have to require it for all of them. We couldn't single out vacation rentals because it'd raise an equal protection issue. So he did caution us against that.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? Don't people who have apartment buildings get business licenses now?
You know, I'd have to confirm. I know we don't require them for single-family residences and things of that nature that rent out or, you know, kind of your vacation rental models. But it sounds like the large apartment complexes do get licenses.
And I'm sorry, I need to -- I forgot to read my -- I'm not doing my job here. I just forgot to read my little cable cast letter. This meeting is cable cast live on Charter Communications Cable TV Channel 8 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99, and is being recorded to be replayed on the following Monday and Friday at 1:00 PM on Charter Channel 71 and Comcast Channel 25. Meetings can also be viewed from the city's website at www.cityofcapitola.org. And our technician tonight is a new one, Lynn Dutton. And as a reminder, please turn your phones to vibrate during the meeting. And if you do choose to come up and speak, we ask that you state your name and sign at the podium. So I'm sorry, having that out of the way, we can continue.
So I think the question that we asked was slightly different. I thought what we were asking was currently, like Beach House, which operates a number of vacation rentals, gets a business license for Beach House, but they don't get individual licenses for each one of the units that get rented that then gets advertised, rented not only through Beach House, but advertised on HomeAway and Verbo and a number of other sites. So I thought one of our questions was whether or not we could require them to get individual licenses or does the Beach House license cover everything?
So legally, I think we could. The practice has been that we require Beach House rentals and any other property manager to come in and they get the business licenses. And then we discussed, well, how do you know who puts up the post? Maybe Beach House rental. The property manager is posting that and marketing it that way, not the individual users. So that's been the practice. I think it would be staff's recommendation to continue it.
Okay.
But if it's something the planning commission wants to investigate further, we could talk to the city council about it and, you know, evaluate our internal practices.
I'm actually even more intrigued by the idea of requiring business licenses in this industry than before. I see Beach House Rentals, that's a management company.
Right.
But the problem we're having is control of this industry as it evolves and is constantly changing. And I think having licenses would help us. I don't know how difficult it is, but I think it's worth looking closer at because it would really help us get control of this.
But I think one of the caution things that Rich is also mentioning is if you do it for the vacation rentals, then you have to do it for all of the rentals. So you've got the, you know, the guys who are renting a house that they have had in the family for years, they would also be required to have a business license. Right, that's what you're saying?
Yeah, and I think the consistency, though, would be something that we would like to have. And for me, it gives us at least one tool to work with these vacation homes that are outside the transit rental area that we haven't been able to control. So I understand it may be logistically challenging to keep track of all those permits, but if we're going to do it for those that are in our vacation rental areas, then we ought to do it for those ones that are outside of the area so we have a better opportunity to control those folks.
Also, my question would be if we can't do it because it's unfair, you know, if we do it for vacation rentals, we have to do it for, why are apartments allowed then? Why isn't the same problem applied to that?
I think with, you know, with the large apartment complex, pretty easy to track. You know, they come in every year.
Why isn't it illegal, you know, it would be illegal, you know, why are they singled out? And there's a problem, you know, we're subject to lawsuit because they're the ones being singled out now.
Well, this might be something that, you know, the city attorney could chime in on. But in my discussion with him, he said, you know, why single out somebody that has both the resources and will to litigate and is going through right now and litigating agencies throughout the country and a number in California actively? That could be a piece of it. It seems to me a lot easier to require it from a apartment complex. That's their business. Single-family home, how do you even know if it's rented out in most cases? You know, so identifying that would be really tricky.
Well, I don't --
Yeah, I think that, yeah.
Yeah, I understand that, but if they're on, currently on sites like HomeAway, of which is just a method to share their information because the actual contract is between the homeowner and the people renting it, then they're obviously doing a business. And for those people, I think that we should have some control because as it stands today, these folks are renting these places in what I would say in an illegal manner and not to what our expectations or code is, so.
But you've also got people, I mean, not to throw the baby out with the bathwater, you've got people that have had homes, for example, that they've rented to the same person for the last 12 years. It's not a vacation rental, it's a, it's, you know...
I think we can draw a rational line between those single-family rentals, long-term versus short-term rentals and multiple rentals, more than four, more than whatever.
So I'm confused. So what was attorney's view again?
So the question, as I understood it, is that we have these property owners who rent their houses for 30 days or more and they advertise them on Airbnb, Verbo, HomeAway, what have you. Could we require them to get a business license? The answer is yes. We have to apply the rule equally to everybody.
We're already applying the rule inequally.
So the example that I would use in this case is that we, I think individually all know a number of people who have businesses that they're doing in their home. I mean, they work at their computer business or whatever it is, sometimes three days a week, sometimes. And technically, all of those people are supposed to get a home occupation permit. And, you know, the reality is they don't unless there is a problem or an issue. So while we had a rule that, you know, all single-family rentals were supposed to get a business license, you know, I can understand that a number of them would sort of fall under the radar because we wouldn't hear about them, there's no complaints, they wouldn't come in and do that. And I think that happens, as I said, like with home occupations and a number of regulations that we have. So I don't think I would shy away from requiring the short-term, you know, rental people. Even if we just required them for all short-term rentals, that would be a step in the right direction.
Which we do now.
But we don't. We're letting them operate under the Beach Houses.
Oh, so that's a separate issue, though. I think, you know, there's a bit of a distinction there. The short-term rentals, 30 days or less, have to get a business license today. And we do try to enforce that. The question, and I don't think there's a legal question if whether or not we want to parse out each of the property management business license and individual users. That's something we probably could do as a matter of city policy.
See, I guess I'm confused. I thought that, and not to pick on the Beach House because they run a very good operation and business, it's just the one that I know. It was my understanding that they came in and got a business license and said, "We are going to be a property manager." And they have 20 units that they're renting. But those individual 20 units don't get business licenses.
Correct.
And what I'm hearing is a desire for those 20 units to get individual business licenses because our experience has been they are rented in other ways than just under the Beach House umbrella.
Right. If they, I think anyone who's renting other than Beach House, if they are only renting through a rental agency, I don't think they should be required to get a second business license on top of the one that their rental agency. But if they are also listing on VRBO or Airbnb, yeah, I think they should. When they rent through their own site, through that other site, they're operating a business.
But Beach House rentals can post their inventory, if you will, on VRBO. And, I mean, it's more a marketing tool than it is a different kind of a business from their perspective, I would think.
Yeah, I think it's more complicated than we can get into tonight. Like, you know, when you click on a house and it's, you click on it on VRBO, does it take you to, you know, the Beach House site because they're the one renting that unit? Or does it take you to the owner's private email? That's, you know...
I think a simple answer is, and I thought you said this, but I'm not sure you meant it, is that every short-term rental should have their own business license. It's not that difficult. As I say, all commercial in Santa Cruz have to have a business license. It's a simple thing. I'm registered with the city of Santa Cruz. I pay them $25 every year, whatever it is. And I don't see why we can't do that. And then we would know everybody and people who didn't have a business license that were doing it. There would be like a prima facie violation there and an easy way to...
And I... You're absolutely correct. You know, if you're operating a short-term vacation rental, you require you get a business license. If you operate under the umbrella of a property manager, whether it be a short-term rental, commercial property, or multifamily residential, my understanding is property manager pays that business licenses for all the properties they manage. It's an internal policy. I don't think it steps on any laws. And ultimately, being a policy issue, the city council could direct us to do something differently.
Well, that's what should be changed, in my opinion. I don't see that an agency who adds and subtracts different homes on a monthly basis should somehow make all those places exempt when they come to. I think each individual place that's rented should have its own license. They should have a license too, as a management company, just like all businesses in the city have a license.
Well, that's where I think you get into the fine line of an apartment building because an apartment building is, you know, in the business of renting apartments to people. So why would you not require that each one of those apartments then have a business license?
So short-term rentals are one thing, which is what we're talking about. Now apartments are long-term rentals.
And, but my specific question to, for our attorney was the 30-day rentals. Because we have areas that these houses are being rented, according to what I can see on websites and through neighbors, is they're being rented illegally. So we've established in the ordinance that it is illegal to rent as a vacation rental in a short-term method outside of our TRO area, then to me, if it's going to be, if they're stating on HomeAway or whatever site it may be that they're a long-term rental, then we should require them to have a business license. And then that gives us the opportunity to engage with them in a business matter that, you know, either we can approve it or not approve it. But that was my concern, was the long 30-day-plus rentals.
So maybe you could go back to the city attorney one more time and...
Well, he was clear saying that you could do it. It just needs to be consistent, right?
Yeah.
And to me, we're being inconsistent for allowing vacation rentals 30 days or less to be, have a license, but vacation rentals 30 days or more were not required. To me, that's the inconsistency, but I guess it's a matter of opinion, so.
Yeah, it didn't seem to waver in his question. I'm happy to go back to him. I think the answer's probably going to be the same. What runs through my mind is even if we wanted to do it for every single-family residence that was a short-term or long-term rental, you know, enforcement so that you're even handed...
Well, it's going to be complaint-driven, right?
It's very easy to check the Verbo site. It's much more difficult in your car and look for rent signs and...
Yeah, it's going, it would be a complaint-driven issue, I'm sure. But I know on Depot Hill, we have a number of houses that are being rented inappropriately. The neighbors have complained about it. They've kept inquiring, what can we do to address it? And to this day, nothing's really been done because they're still doing it, so.
And I don't know if this solves that problem. They just pay 500 bucks a year.
But it gives us a tool because of the business license, at least it requires, at least that gives us an door to say we have an agreement, a business agreement, on how we're going to operate, so. Just a suggestion. Okay, well, thank you. With that, I guess we'll go, is that anymore under oral communications and staff comments, sir? I'm sorry.
That's all I have.
We're looking at approval of minutes for...
I think somebody in the audience wants to talk oral communication.
I think we're going to open that up under public hearing. We'll do the, it's, we don't have to list it that way this, but we'll do it because it'll apply to everything. So we're looking at approval of our minutes for Planning Commission's special meeting September 1st. And we could do both on September 19th. Does anybody want to make a motion?
There's no discussion on move approval. Seka?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Hi? Now we'll open up our public hearing portion of our zoning code update. And we will allow members of the audience to come...
There might be somebody here who's speaking with something related to zoning. Right? Oral communications? Is that, you mean that?
I think Molly's here to talk about the zoning.
I think she's, yeah, I think she's here to talk about the zoning. According to her letter, so.
Hey, TJ, will you approve both sets, Ms. First and the 19th?
Yes.
I was going to say, was that, I assumed it was a joint motion.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks. Okay, so we'll open up this, for public hearings, to talk about our zoning code update. If anyone in the audience would like to address any issues that's on our zoning code update, this would be an opportunity for you to come up and we'll give you a few minutes to address the commission.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Molly Ordin and I live on Monterey Avenue. And I just wanted to follow up on a letter that I recently sent you and staff. And really sincerely thank you for all your laborious labors on all of our behalf in this zoning code update process. I, myself, have been away out of town for several months. And I think we all know this is just an incredibly busy season with elections and the propositions that are on the ballot. And I'm just here again to urge you to just take the foot off the gas or put the foot on the brakes if it is on that. And give us all some time to have this presented yet another time in really understandable language, maps, things that are very easy for the public to digest. What I'm afraid is that you all are so familiar with this, but what's going to happen is these changes are going to be put in place and then we're going to come back to you in a year or two or whatever, and we're going to go, what is this? You know, what is this? What does this mean? And I didn't know that this was this or this was that. So I really encourage you to slow down and really try one more time to reach out to the public and present it in a fashion that's easily understood by all of us. And then I think you'll garner a lot of community support for the process. So thanks very much.
Thank you, Molly.
Can I also just add one more comment?
Okay.
Can I say something about what you were just discussing?
You mean about the vacation rental?
Uh-huh.
Sure.
So actually, I was going to actually write you a letter about this, but I thought I would save you another one of my long letters. But just for your information, so we live on Depot Hill. I think most of you know where we live, on Monterey Avenue, up above the village. And because we have family that lives out of state, we take the opportunity in the summertime to go visit them for two or three months. And we rent our home, and we have been doing it for many years, for two months, three months, generally to the same families. And I heard you talking about it when you were talking about the vacation rentals. And for me personally, I would have no problem getting a business license. I guess when I advertise my home on VRBO, which I don't even know if it's worth it for me to do because we do just get the same people, you know, once or twice a year. But I wouldn't mind saying, you know, licensed by the city of Capitola. I don't know what I would get for my $500, however. I mean, I'd have to ask that question. But for me, I would have no objection to that whatsoever. And if it would help other neighborhoods where there is illegal rentals going on that are bothering the neighbors, et cetera, then I would be, I would be fine with it. So that's just my personal perspective. And I just want to tell you one other thing. The reason why we do rent our house out is because we go away for a very long time and I don't want to leave our house empty. So we have people that come and take care of our home, they take care of our garden, they're very respectful of our neighbors. We've just never had any problem whatsoever, so.
No, and I think that is the point of being able to have those 30-day-plus rentals is so you could do exactly that.
Right.
It's when that process is being abused and that we need to address, so.
Right. Mr. Chair, could I ask her a question?
Sure.
Would you feel the same way if you were paying Beach House rentals or vacations by the sea to rent your home for those three or four months?
You mean to buy, to get a license? No, I would, I mean, I probably wouldn't do that because ours are so few and I have personal contact with the people that rent our home. But I would think that the agency would be the one that would have the license, not me individually.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Somebody else who would like to get up and speak tonight? He's with the staff, so don't worry about him. He's just... Paul Albert, an outside counsel for Verizon Wireless. Good evening. Okay, I was the mayor of Sausalito. And we had the business tax, the business license requirement for the hotel occupancy tax, which we imposed upon any rental of less than 30 days. I'll stop and talk about Verizon Wireless. Thank you so much for hearing our comments this evening. We've sent you a letter regarding the wireless components of the zoning ordinance that you are revising. And again, appreciate that that's part of the settlement agreement that Verizon Wireless reached with the city. And we were actually very pleased to see the many very positive changes that have been made in the wireless ordinance, particularly as it applies to setbacks and location preferences and design preferences. We did send in a letter of comments of issues we see with respect to federal law and state law. And in a discussion with the city attorney today, agreed that if the city, planning commission, needs another month to work on those comments that we provided regarding state and federal law conflicts of the code, that that's something Verizon Wireless would happily provide in order to arrive at a better wireless ordinance that reduces friction between the city and the wireless industry. And it sounds like there's some community support for some additional time. The issues we raised are in our letter. I could go through them in detail or I can go through them briefly. I think they're the sorts of detail that will benefit from a careful review by the city attorney. We've offered to participate in that, either through some kind of stakeholders meeting. I work on these ordinances up and down the state, actually, all the way up to Juneau, Alaska and elsewhere. And sometimes sitting down with the people who will be making those applications and working through some of the details helps eliminate future friction about simple things like submittals and findings and so forth so that they comply with laws. We're happy to participate or even help facilitate that with other carriers if that's helpful. The issues briefly that we raised deal a lot with a new law called the Spectrum Act, which was passed in 2012, and the regulations only became effective in April. And that deals with modifications to facilities. And particularly, there's a distinction between a state law that was passed last year that compels approval of certain applications and the federal law and the notices that were required. And we think that's something that can be cleared up, but needs to be cleared up. There's a distinction between some of the findings that are in your code related to the federal law that we don't think match up exactly with the federal law. And we think that there's a need to revise some of that, some of that language. There's language about interference and immediately resolving any interference that's caused by our facilities. And I have to say, I've been doing this 30 years and I'm not aware of any interference problems that our facilities have caused in California. But the federal law, again, tends to govern how interference is controlled by the FCC. There's a provision that requires for the potential for annual RF testing of wireless facilities. There's a recent case in California saying that the local jurisdictions can't require annual testing. We're able, we're willing to provide confirmation that we comply with FCC guidelines and so forth, but the specific requirement of testing. Those are, these are some of the, some of the issues we'd like to address. The code also suggests that the city could require certain technical upgrades to our equipment. And again, the technology that's provided in our equipment and our antennas is governed by the FCC, which licenses all of this equipment and is sort of beyond the scope of the cities. But they're really just, they're not elimination of these concepts, but tweaking of the language to confirm that it's not an overstepping of the bounds of the city or stepping on the toes of the FCC. I noticed one issue that we seem to be coming up upon in a number of jurisdictions when there are fires and when there are large events in a community, we end up putting in something called a COW, a cell-on-wheels, a temporary facility. And the code doesn't touch on that issue. How would you, how would you permit a 30, 60, 90-day mobile wireless facility that's brought in to the community for a short period of time? And we think it would be very helpful to address that. There are issues related to the 10-year term, which is provided for under state law, and how that interplays with modifications. Your code currently says that no modification can extend that 10-year term. And that can put a wireless company in a position where they want to upgrade to 4G or 5G to provide the service that people are demanding. But they can't make that modification because the underlying permit only has one more year on it and they don't want to make that investment of hundreds of thousands of dollars. Your code right now says that that underlying permit term can't be extended under any circumstances. We'd like to give you the flexibility to extend that term if it's something that we ask for in our application. You know what, so I think maybe, unless you want to continue hearing what his update says, because I, well, I think we're going to have a discussion on continuing this. Right. And so when staff comes back next month and give them the time to review it so we don't have to rehash all of these issues. And is there someone that would like to continue here? You mean you're not fascinated by this? I'm sorry.
I myself am.
I appreciate you giving us information, but... Yeah, no, actually, I'm done with the issues. But I just wanted to give you a sense of the flavor of the sorts of things that we're asking you to continue and look at. We're not saying that the ordinance is, you know, has to be thrown out, it's illegal and all that sort of things. But these kinds of tweaks may sound technical, but ultimately, we think they'll help avoid any conflicts in the future. So with that, I'll step down and say that we've agreed to that extension and we can document it and the settlement agreement is necessary. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So do we need to make a motion or anything to continue the wireless chapter or...
Yeah, I think that would be in order.
Okay, I make a motion.
I was going to, did you want to make a comment also? Okay, so we're done with public comment? Okay. I just want to make sure we close with public comment. Okay, so, yeah, that's...
I make a motion to continue our discussion on the wireless ordinance until our next regularly scheduled meeting.
I'll second that.
Do we have a second? Linda's second.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Hi? Great, thank you. And thank you, sir, for bringing the information to us. You know, if I could now, we...
know, if I could now, moving to our zoning code update, maybe, I don't know if it'd be Katie or Rich, give me, maybe just give us a little council update on what's happened at the city council level. And then maybe we could have discussion on what our timeline is and where we're at.
Sure. So as I think most of you are aware, the city council had a special meeting this past Saturday, October 1st. Met for about four, four and a half hours, made quite a bit of progress. I think they almost completed section four.
Almost.
So there's a little bit left in that. Then we'll go through section five, which, as you recall, it's more the administrative chapters. They move through much quicker. The planning commission level, we expect the same at city council. A few loose end items, so we got to talk coastal, about the coastal chapters with the council. We're gonna talk about the vacation rental, based on the planning commission's recommendations. So there's a little bit of loose ends to tie up with them. Our next meeting with them is the regularly scheduled, scheduled meeting on the 13th, next Thursday. That agenda is almost entirely dedicated to the zoning code. That would be their deadline, I think, if they were gonna adopt it this year. At this point, we don't expect that to happen. There's still quite a bit of work. So, the goal that we sort of have now, at least at staff, where we'd like to be, is we'd like to get final recommendations and direction from both the planning commission and council under, under this current term, so that when the new commission and council is seated, staff can go away, we can work on a draft, and then they can make the decision if they want to review anything again, or if it's ready to start, you know, a public review period, and let them, you know, put it out to the public for more comments. The remaining calendar after that with the planning commission, you have your regular meeting in November. We do tentatively have a December regular meeting scheduled. In past election years, sometimes we've canceled that meeting. It is a bit awkward in terms of, it's a lame duck city council. They're turned over by that point and haven't put their appointees in the chair. So that's something we can discuss next month, whether or not we have that meeting. So at this point, you know, if we can get through it tonight, that's great. If not, I think we'll shoot for, you know, finishing up the planning commission in November, and hopefully the city council as well. And then we'll wait till the new folks are seated and take direction from there.
And we'll have the wireless component for the November meetings.
Yeah, so at the end of the day, we're gonna have to marry those timelines up. But as it looks right now, the wireless may be extended a little bit further. But it shouldn't really complicate things too much.
Okay.
At least that's a hope.
Because you have, you still have the coastal commission issues to deal with.
Yeah.
So it's gonna be, you know, held up for a little while, anyway.
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna have it, you know, a minimum one more meeting with city council. My guess is two. That, you know, possibly a third before they could give us final direction to go away and write the final draft.
So, one of my goals is for the public to have like a 30-day period somewhere in this process, that they get to look at what is, you know, close to the final document. Because, you know, I mean, we've talked about, we get confused at times where we are on various stages. And so I think it's been a bit of a confusing process for the public. You know, the thing about having shared parking in the village, we said no, the council said yes, and then we said yes, and then the council said no. And if you're a member of the public, you know, trying to follow all that really, really is difficult. So I would like to see us come up with sort of a final document where we can give the public a list, here are, you know, sort of the big-ticket items that have changed, just like you've provided to us several times. And then give them an opportunity to look at it, an opportunity to look at the new zoning map. Because, you know, people will look at that and look at their specific parcel. We keep finding changes that need to be made in that. And so, when would that happen?
So it really is dependent upon what the progress that we make with the planning commission city council from here to the end of the year. I think under an ideal scenario, the commission and council get done before December. Staff goes away, produces the final draft, and we could put it on the website. I think we've doubled down our efforts to notify people. We do have a old general plan update, interested parties list that we've been using to keep, you know, some of those folks informed of what we're doing. We do a blaster there, you know, newsletter, website, scroll, you know, our traditional methods of outreach. And then, you know, take direction from both the commission and the council when those new bodies are seated, as to how long they want it out there. But I think under that scenario, it'd be out in the streets at least a month.
And I don't mean to be picky and grumpy, but I don't want that month to be over Christmas and New Year's. Because we have done that in the past, and I don't think that's really fair. There are a lot of people, you know, make it six weeks if you're gonna include the two weeks of Christmas or, or of New Year's.
Sure. And it's certainly gonna be a question we ask the council and the planning commission.
And just so, we have a little cross information here. The library, you know, we're gonna be holding public library meetings during that time for library design. And that, that's exactly the same timeline, just right after the New Year is, is the timeline for that. And those are important, they're critical to the timeline of the building and the library. So you might check with Jamie and, you know, check with all that.
The other thing we talked about a lot here was, you know, if we make our recommendations and council significantly changes them, how does that come back around? And do we have an opportunity in a joint meeting or something to, to change things and, and discuss it? I watched most of the Saturday meeting afterwards, you know, from video. And there were some things that, it's hard to follow exactly what their direction was at the end of the day on non-conforming parcels, as an example, that were really concerning because they really took a different tact at it than we did. When do we, when does that come back up? And when do we get to see, you know, what those red lines really look like?
You'll definitely get a chance at it. Again, I can only speculate based on how much progress is made here over the next month. But whether it's this planning commission or the next one, we are obligated to return with significant changes. It's actually limited to things that they've changed that you haven't considered. I mean, if something you consider and they change it, it's not, something you can necessarily get a second bite. Nonetheless, we're gonna drop off their complete draft to you and say, what are your comments? It's probably gonna take more than a meeting, is my guess. And we'll go through it and get the planning commission's comments, final recommendation, go to council. But I think some of those dates will really be determined once we have final directions.
I would, you know, my, my, I think it's important that we, you know, let the public have their opportunity to take a look at. Last thing we want to do is put something out there that's gonna be some opposition to. But I kinda like the process of letting us get through the process with a, a good draft document that we can recommend, and then get public comment. And there's a couple of us that may not, or will not be here next year. So it, to have new planning commissioners come in and then start trying to work through all this process again could be very cumbersome, I think. So I, I think it would be nice if we could get to a point where we agree at least to push the draft, a draft to the city council for recommendation before some of us are gone. And then, then the public can have their chance to comment. It can be followed up next year. I don't know if that makes sense, but.
So I, I have a couple sort of what I would call big picture items about the zoning ordinance, which for me to recommend it to the council, I, I think need to be addressed. And they certainly, I, I think they're easily addressed. They're just things that are important to me. You know, I, I don't know when, when we want to hear those. I mean, one of them, for example, is, you know, in, in the purpose sections that we have on almost all of our zoning ordinances, I, I ask for the tenses in a couple of them to be changed, but they're not changed in all of them. I mean, I just think somebody needs to go back and, and look at those sections. You know, I, I think I gave some examples at the meeting, like, you know, in the purpose of the residential district, you know, we say things like, the mass scale and design of new homes are compatible with existing homes. And to me, it should say, you know, to be compatible with existing homes and to be, because they haven't, they haven't happened yet. They, they. And so, you know, I'm, I'm perfectly comfortable with you and Ben and Katie going through it, because my concern now is I've asked for changes in some sections, and I haven't asked them in all. So if somebody could just proof those and make certain they're consistent.
Ben?
One thing that will happen after the city council and the planning commission have all sort of gone through this draft document is that we're gonna do a complete review, front-to-end, proofreading, consistency. And we'll probably catch a lot of little things like that, that we can kind of correct before we have the draft final that's out there for the public to look at before it's, you know, considered for adoption.
You know, the other thing for me is I think there are some maps that need to be included as part of this zoning ordinance. We refer to those maps in the zoning ordinance and, you know, our, our diagrams in there, like we talk about, you know, in our coastal land use, there's zone A, there's zone B, there is, you know, an established hazards area that we refer to. And it's, and those maps define what those areas are. It seems like they ought to be included, just like the zoning map is included as part of the zoning ordinance. All of the other maps that we refer to need to be included. So when things change, everybody's aware of it and it's coordinated.
I agree 100%. The problem is, those are all in the LCP, and the coastal commission is very firm that local agencies shall not touch their maps. They are the only ones that will modify their maps, get in line with the rest of the agencies. And so we've initiated the request for them to update those maps. I do have some concern about them updating our maps. And, you know, those areas growing on how they see fit.
Yeah.
But I agree with the principle entirely. I, I don't know that we're gonna be able to get there without waiting a couple of years for the coastal commission to clear their deck and prepare maps for us.
But, I mean, right now, the way this is written, like the geologic hazard district, if you were determining that, is determined by what's on that map. So.
So we could photocopy those?
I'm not asking them to change that map. I'm saying that map needs to be a part of what we are adopting, because we keep referring to that map. And you, you don't know what it is.
You mean, like just as a reference appendage or some?
Right, just like we refer to the zoning map. The zoning map becomes part of the document.
So we can photocopy. It'll be, you know, it won't be high production. We don't have digital copies of these maps. They're made in the late 70s, early 80s. So that's been kind of the rub, even Katie today, when she was trying to find maps to bring to the commission. That's all we have. And it's been a, a long source of frustration for me.
And I'll chime in that they, when I made the request to, you know, can we update with RGIS, you know, us do it internally, it was a firm no. And then also, he said, well, I've scanned the map for you, and it's attached to the email. And then just the scale and every, now it looks, when you get the scanned map, it looks kind of warped. And so this is, to the best we have, we, we have tried to digitally do it internally, and then they very clearly said we should not be creating our own digital maps, so.
Well, it seems to me that if we put them in here, they'd be so small, people probably wouldn't be able to read them anyway. Witness what we're trying to read in, in our small ones throughout this process. And so would it be helpful if we, when we referred to a map, said that it was, you know, available online, you know, in a small version, but if, but in, but always at city hall in a large version? Or, you know, because I don't think it's gonna do any good.
I think, I think that would be fine. And I think over time, you know, we can always slip those maps in. You know, through an ordinance amendment, we hopefully get the implementation plan adopted. I, I think it's critically important as well. It's frustrating.
We could probably pay for a nicely scanned map.
So I guess.
What else, Susan? Does, you have anything else?
Now, those are the only ones we sort of need to talk about now, because a lot of my others, I assume, will all be taken care of when I get this final document. I can go over some of those little points with Katie.
Have we reached a final conclusion as to the timing of this? Because, I mean, the point you raise about the changeover, this is, concerns me a lot, that we lose a lot of ground here.
That's where I would like, before, before we move on too far, I'd like to get some kind, type of consensus on, do we need to add a day so we can try to get our component done? I think it's important that we also make the public aware of when they're gonna have their timeframe, so they don't think we're just gonna shove this thing through. So if maybe we come up with a little timeframe that works for us and.
Seems like we have to have a timeframe that some, that somewhere after the council has seen it for the final time. I mean.
For the public.
At some point, we're gonna be bouncing this thing back and forth, and it's going to go into a new regime. It can't, it can't help but. It's got to.
No, but I guess what I'm saying, we're so in the details right now, that if, before you and I leave, if we could at least get the draft where we're saying, okay, we're done with this, the city council can take a look at it. And if whoever comes in and replaces us, wants to jump in and make changes, say more power to them. But at least we've gone through it and we, we passed off a draft.
Well, see, I'm, I'm, I'm willing to pass off a draft to them. I'm not willing to recommend that, you know, they adopt the zoning code update as modified. I'm not willing to say, I want you to adopt this document right now, unless, you know, I see a final one that's been cleaned up a bit more.
Yeah, and I don't think we're gonna see that before we leave office. So maybe.
So the question is, do we need another?
Meeting.
We need some kind of hearing, because our only other meeting, it sounds like, is gonna be the next Novem, November meeting of the planning commission. We're not gonna get, I don't know how much power we're gonna get tonight. Do we need more time before the end of the year?
You know, I, I really don't know. I mean, based on what I've heard from some of the commissioners individually, it doesn't sound like there's a lot left to talk about. It was our hope that we talk about it tonight.
Right.
Well, let's say what we are doing tonight and talk at the end of the night.
Okay.
How about that?
Yeah, we can do that. Sounds good. So we have.
If you think about lame duck, lame duck happens on the 7th or whatever, the 9th or whatever.
November 8th.
Yeah. Doesn't happen in December. It happens right after the election, right? So I'm not sure we have to worry so much about December necessarily.
Well, I, I'm, I'm not worried about being a lame duck.
I'm not either.
I've probably been that for a while, but I'd like to just see us be able to at least.
The December meeting of the city council is ceremonial. They don't do any business traditionally, so their last meeting is November 22nd. So in order for them to get something from you, a, a final, you know, recommended, recommended draft, that would have to happen sometime the 12th or earlier.
But they wouldn't need to get it. I think what we're saying is we just need to maybe, hopefully get far enough along so that we, we can, it's ready to be given to a new council. You know.
Yeah, I mean, you couldn't delay it.
I don't think they even need a recommendation. They've gotten all the front part of it without any kind of recommendation from us. And they've been going through that. I mean, they're gonna go through it again. I guess I'm a little confused about the process.
What would the planning commission's action be? Sort of a recommendation?
A recommendation for the draft, I.
Well, we have, we've provided them with the draft document that they have been looking at all along, right?
Which I would call your recommendation. Right?
Right.
This is not your final recommendation, because once the council weighs in on your suggested edits, they're gonna make changes, present that to the planning commission. That's when the final recommendation comes in, and you say, we recommend it with, you know, A through Z changes, or whatever you vote on. Now, you don't have to take any action. We can wait till the new planning commission council's seated and resume then.
I think, you know, the, the unease that some of the commissioners are feeling, I, I share and I understand it. But I really do not think we're going to get this done before the new planning commissioners and council take over. And we just need to get, have the process be as graceful as possible and as open as possible, get as much done as possible, and, and leave it at that. We're not, it's not gonna happen.
So to be clear, I, I agree. I don't think that the city council, this current city council will adopt the zoning code. I think it would take a minor miracle.
Yeah, that's not gonna happen.
But I think it would be very beneficial to those of you that spent the last 18 months and 40-some public meetings to pass off a draft. Then.
We can, if we can.
Yeah, if you can. I mean, I think that's, you know, a goal worth aspiring to.
Well, I think we're real close. I think the wireless component's gonna be maybe outside that window, or maybe we do it sometime in November. But I think, I think we're getting close to it. I just.
Well, we pass off a draft, but then they, they fiddle with it, and then it comes back to us.
That's right.
So it's not going to be the us that they, that that draft comes back to. There's going to be a new planning commission that's got to look at all of this, no matter what.
Yeah, because, because we're passing off red lines now that aren't a recommendation, but they're, they're our red lines and they're changing them. And when we get all done with all of our red lines, then that's our draft going forward, but are we going to get their changes back in the meantime?
Yeah.
Are we on?
Yeah, I mean, I think it'll be the new planning commission that gets the clean copy, city council changes.
And then they'll have a chance to discuss them and...
Absolutely.
It could go back again, who knows?
Yeah, they, they could say, "We want to start over from page one."
Right.
I'm praying that's not the direction, but if it is, we will serve.
Job security.
Yeah.
Well, maybe we could do this, maybe we could take, do you have something, Katie, I'm sorry?
I was just going to say, the slide might help, that, you know, February 4th, we've put out the zoning code. We've had 14 special meetings with the planning commissions, doesn't include the issues and options efforts. Tonight's October 6th, and this, this evening, we're asking for a recommendation on the draft to the city council. City council will then, they've, they've been working on your red lines, but they're not finalized yet, so they'll be working through. Anything you mentioned tonight, we'd also bring back to the city council, and they would provide their red lines in a document, you know, and then we'll bring you back a document that has your changes accepted. You'll see the city council's red lines in that updated document. Most likely, the planning commission would then change, who's sitting on this board, and it would be out for public review, and then we'd, after the planning commission has decided on the city council's red lines, it would go back to city council for adoption. So sometimes seeing it helps, I think, in the conversation. So there's a slide that...
And maybe in that slide, you could just put the public...
That, I was...
So they have a chance to see that they're actually included in the process.
And I, and that would be the second to last step, when it says, "Planning Commission Final Recommendation." When those, when the city council's red lines are finalized, at that point, it goes out for public review.
As the planning commission, do we want to make a recommendation before the public reviews it?
Well, it will come back. So once the city council red lines come back, that's when it would go out for public review. And after the public review is when we would ask for the planning commission final recommendation.
I mean, for me personally, as a planning commissioner, I'm not certain I'm willing to recommend it before the public has a chance to review what our final document was.
Yeah, I, I think, I think as long as they have a public comment period and they have a chance to do it. I mean, for me, we've had 40-something public meetings for that opportunity to do the draft and send it out for them for public, I, I'm comfortable with that. I don't, that's just my, my opinion, but...
I would point out, you can couch your recommendation, rather than a recommendation to adopt, this is our recommended content, or something like that. But I think the planning commission, it has got to make some type of action to go to the city council, to rec, to conclude the process, at least at this stage of the process.
I just want to be clear on what I'm hearing. The city council red lines get finalized, and then it goes out for public review, and then it comes to the planning commission for their final recommendation? Or is the public review after that? I'm hearing one thing, I think, from Rich and another from Katie.
Once the city council red lines are finalized, we would provide you with a copy, just as we did back in February, and we'd put it out for public review.
At the same time?
Same time. We'd, and then we wouldn't ask you for a comment until the four to six week period, as we discussed.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, I don't, I'm not sure I would see the benefit of having another planning commission recommendation to the city council, and then putting it out for public review, and then the planning commission considering public review, and then passing on it, and it just, I don't know. It becomes even more...
It's a policy decision, yeah. So could I recommend that we take a couple of minute break and reconvene at 7 o'clock for a regular meeting?
Sure.
Is that...
Sure.
Okay.
I'll sit down.
Did we do anything in that?
So do we need to...
We did absolutely not, that was one of the most frustrating things.
A motion to continue the special meeting until after the conclusion of the regular meeting?
Okay, so I'll ask for a motion to continue until after our regular meeting.
Some, yeah.
We got first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
That was the most frustrating.
Someone coordinated it.
We got nothing bad. We got nothing.
I think we ought to order our regularly scheduled planning commission meeting for Thursday, October 6th. We've already done our roll call and pledge of allegiance from our special meeting, and tonight, we'll, at this point, we'll go to oral communications. But first, since those of you may be new from when we started our special meeting, if you have pagers or phones, we ask that you put them on silence, vibrate. And also, if you do come up to speak at the podium, please state your name and sign in for our minutes. With that, do we have any additions or deletions to this meeting?
Staff has no changes.
Okay, this point is open for public comments, and those, this time is for those individuals who would like to speak on items that are not on tonight's agenda. So if you have something that's not on tonight's agenda that you would like to come up and present to us, this is your opportunity. We'll give you three minutes to speak. Go.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Pat Trimble, Loma Vista. I'd like to speak about two issues with the 2205 Warf Road application, safety and sewer. For safety, the planter box on the south side of the property blocks the emergency access easement, needs to be removed from the plans. It hinders emergency access to PG&E's gas pipeline and emergency access to and from Loma Vista. No structure should be built within that 20-foot emergency access easement. Sewer, Loma Vista believes that the existing building at 2205 Warf Road is connected to the Loma Vista private sewer system. Our assumption is supported by historical facts. The land was agricultural with a small house on a septic system, and it was present when the Wenzels purchased the property to expand their mobile home park, build their home, add a two-car garage and an office. The Wenzels built their new home at the same time they installed the sewer system for the new mobile homes. We believe the Wenzels connected their new home to the Loma Vista sewer system. It was their private system. It's what they could do, it was all theirs. When the sewer systems are designed, Uniform Plumbing Code rules apply, and the unit for measurement of sewer system capability is the drainage fixture unit. Toilets, showers, tubs, sinks, other sewage-producing devices are assigned ratings. For example, a modern low-flow toilet is three units, an older toilet, four. A shower is two units, and a tub-shower combination is three. Sewer system pipes are assigned load capacity ratings based on their size and their slope. Loma Vista sewer line is a 4-inch pipe, and it has a 1 in 7 slope. Uniform Plumbing Code reports a maximum drainage fixture unit load capacity rating of 183 units. Total calculated sewage load for the nine mobile homes on that line, plus the 2205 Warf Road building, is 206 units. 183 maximum, 206 actual, 11 percent over capacity. Commissioners, in your review of this application, consider that the proposed duplex-to-triple conversion, plus the large single-family home, would add 27 units, bringing the total sewage load to 233 units, 21 percent over capacity. Commissioners, in your review of this application, please include consideration of increased liability risk for the city. If the Loma Vista private sewer system fails because the city permitted a neighbor to abuse it, the city becomes a deep pocket for insurance company attorneys. Please deny this application in its entirety. It is not in the best interest of our community. Commissioners, thank you for listening, thank you for your contribution to our community, and good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Trimble. Okay, do we have anyone else tonight that would like to speak on anything that's not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, then I'll bring it back for commission comments?
None.
No commission comments, and staff comments?
Staff has no comments.
No staff comments. All right, now we're looking at our approval of our minutes from our regularly scheduled meeting on September 1st. And I guess we just need a motion?
Of approval.
Got a motion?
Second.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to our public hearings. The first item we have on our agenda is 4810 Topaz Street. We'll start with a staff report.
Good evening, commissioners. Before you, is an application for a design permit to build a new two-story home with a variance request to exceed the maximum floor area ratio allowance. The project is also in the coastal zone and requires a coastal development permit. The project site consists of an existing vacant lot, sound R1, single-family residential. The property is located in the Jewel Box residential neighborhood, just north of the Trade Winds Mobile Home Park. Here you can see the vacant lot. The parcel is flat, rectangular shaped, and consists of 3,200 square feet. It is a typical 40 by 80 lot in the Jewel Box. So here's the site plan. The proposed two-story home would contain a reversed floor plan with 202 square feet of second-story deck space. Those are highlighted in blue. Here's the proposed front elevation. The first-story exterior finishes include horizontal lap siding, a covered front entry with a pillar and arbor above, and a sectional wood roll-up garage door. The second story would consist of shingle siding, second-story decks on the front and rear, and a 412 pitched roof with composition shingles. Here's the proposed west-side elevation. An exterior spiral staircase is proposed at the rear of the home. The staircase extends five feet from the back of the proposed home and is in allowed encroachment within the code. Here you can see the proposed rear elevation, and here the east-side elevation. Finished home would be 24 feet 8 inches tall. The applicant is proposing a chimney on the east side of the home to extend to 26 feet 6 inches, and this is an allowed height encroachment. The vacant 3,200-square-foot property can contain a maximum floor area ratio of 57 percent, or 1,824 square feet of habitable area. The proposed home would be 29 square feet over that allowance. Following the ark and site hearing, staff advised that the applicant reduce the proposal by those 29 square feet to be in compliance with the code. The applicant is instead requesting a variance from the maximum floor area ratio calculation. As a part of this proposal, the property owner submitted a letter for the variance request. The owner contends that deck shouldn't be included in the floor area ratio because the draft updated zoning code would no longer include deck space in this calculation. The owner also alleges that the planning commission has historically granted exemptions to deck sizes in the floor area ratio calculation. And lastly, the owner notes that the proposed home and deck design would match the design enassing of the neighborhood, and that the deck would not create privacy concerns. So staff met with the applicant onsite following the ark and site hearing to discuss privacy concerns with the proposed rear yard second-story deck. This image was taken at estimated eye level from where the proposed second-story deck would be. The deck does not appear to create privacy concerns with the neighbors to the east and west on Topaz. However, it does appear to create a privacy issue with Unit 70 of the Mobile Home Park to the north. The planning commission may grant a variance permit when it finds that, one, because a special circumstance is applicable to the property, it's found to deprive the subject property of privileges enjoyed by neighbors, and that, two, that the grant of a variance permit would not be a special privilege. The applicant's reasoning provided does not support a finding of special circumstance necessary to grant a variance. The property is vacant, flat, regularly shaped, and of similar size to surrounding lots. In addition, the new code is not adopted, and is thus not reasoning for a variance. Therefore, staff recommends denial of the variance, and recommends the applicant reduce the proposed floor area ratio by 29 square feet in order to be in compliance with the code. Therefore, staff recommends planning commission approve the application for 4810 Topaz Street with a reduction in square footage. Thank you.
Okay, any questions for staff? Is the applicant here? Would you like to get up and give us your, your version here?
Sure. Good evening, Tim Martin. Thanks, Ryan. Hi, Katie, nice to see you. Yeah, I'm in agreement with staff on everything, of course, except the variance, but the conditions of approval are all fine with, with me. Ryan stated my, what I had mentioned to them, is we kind of went forward with the project in the slightly, it's 29 square feet, but that variance request, thinking that by the time we got to this, that would already be in place in your, in your new code. I think by the time we build it, it probably will be. But we have a little deck on the front that is more decorative than anything. I'm trying to keep the house cute, because the neighborhood's cute. So that little deck kind of provided that, that little sense of cuteness. If we take it away, I think it, I think it messes with the, the architecture. If we take it away, I think it messes with the architecture. So I'm hoping you guys can approve it as proposed with the variance.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Martin?
Just one question. Was there any consideration to just shaving 29 square feet off of the back deck and leaving the little deck off?
We looked at that, yeah. The back deck kind of becomes unusable if we do that. So, yeah, we did look at that.
I have a question about the photograph of the house that opened to the presentation?
Yes.
Is that a photograph of the?
Actually, this home that we designed was built recently in Seascape. So the gentleman who built it, I happen to know him, and it just so happens that his lot was 40 by 80, which is what our lot is. So it worked out nicely, and it's a really cute house. It just got the architectural award for the year from Seascape, from their community. It's really, it's a lot prettier than that in person. You'd have to see it. But, yeah, there's a big sign on the front of it right now that says winner of the 2016 Architectural Award. So hopefully you guys will like it.
Can I ask a question of staff?
Sure. Any more questions for Mr. Martin?
No, it's my understanding from reading our proposed zoning ordinance that their rear deck would still be counted in the floor area ratio even if the new, when the new ordinance is adopted, because our new ordinance says for decks not to be counted, they have to be open on three sides. So this, yeah, this will count even after our new ordinance is adopted in the floor area ratio.
The rear deck?
The rear deck will.
Okay. Help me understand, I didn't follow you completely. If it's closed on two sides? And when you say closed, is it closed with a wall style or rail style?
Just the walls.
Just the walls?
Yeah.
So the decks that I have, are they, how do they categorize? Like, the front one has two sides of rail, and the back one has two sides of railing?
The way our proposed new zoning ordinance is worded, unless your deck is open completely on three sides, then it will count in the floor area ratio.
Okay, so it's only going to pertain to ground-floor decks? Is that? Because, I mean, upstairs, you always have to have a rail, right?
Apply the second-floor decks as well.
It's not the railing, I think it's the wall that?
Oh, it's the walls.
Yeah. So when they're talking about open, it's railing, because that's required by law, obviously.
Right, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
It's the wall.
Yeah, so I was just trying to point out that even if the new ordinance is in effect, it wouldn't be a different set of rules as far as the floor area ratio is concerned for your rear deck.
Okay.
The front deck would not count, right?
Front deck is also open on just two of the sides, so.
Yeah, so they would count in our new ordinance.
Okay. Okay. Okay, any more questions for Mr. Martin? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else that would like to talk about this site before we move on? If not, then I'll bring it back to the commission for discussion.
Okay, so we only have one issue here, which is the variance, and we're constrained by the state rules on variances, which are very strict in terms of supporting a variance. And we have tons of these 40 by 80-square-foot lots in Capitola, and we can't start just deviating, as far as I'm concerned, from our development standards. I'm not aware of this being a policy to allow changes in the floor area ratio in that area, so I'm not seeing the basis that would allow us to grant this variance. Otherwise, the project's fine.
Yeah, I actually agree with you, and I'm the person who hates second-floor rear decks. And, you know, I think in this particular case, I talked to not only the property owner on one side, but the people who live in the mobile home park who are directly behind it. And, you know, their opinion was that the houses on either side have rear decks. What difference does it make that this house has one? So while I'm normally not in favor of them, the only issue I have with this project is the same as Commissioner Newman's. I don't think there's any kind of basis or finding for granting the variance to the 29 square feet. Other than that, I'm fine.
Yeah, I appreciate that you looked at the new code carefully and made sure that it doesn't change, because that was my only really question coming into this. I have a deck that's smaller than the rear deck, and it's very usable for me, so I think that it would be possible to shave off 29 square feet back there and still keep that adorable house, and I love the design. It's a really, really cute, cute design. But I can't see what the basis would be for granting a variance on brand-new construction on a lot that could handle it, so I.
Can I approach you? Can I respond to that?
Actually, we don't usually allow this back-and-forth piece between that, but.
I just want, if I can, it's up to you.
Okay.
There's two things that I'm hearing that I want to clarify. So my intent would be, if we weren't going to be granted the variance, I say "we," my wife and I, that we would eliminate the front deck, not reduce the back deck. We would just, because that's our overhang for the front porch, anyway. So that would be the deck that we'd take the square footage out of. And then there is a precedent for this on Monterey Street at 408 Monterey, where you did grant a variance for a very similar FAR request. So, Mr. Newman, you mentioned that you didn't think there was precedent for it. There is one I know of for certain, F408 Monterey, so I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that. Thank you.
I wasn't aware of that, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
So I do think, I would like to say that we do grant variances here and there, and they're not, it's not a hard and fast rule, but generally, when you see us grant a variance, it has to do with a give-and-take in a special circumstance, and without going back and looking at that application to see exactly why we thought it was a good idea to grant that variance.
I know why.
You do.
I remember that one. That's the one that dealt with the slope of the lot that goes down to Monterey, but they access it off the alleyway.
Right.
So it had to do with the topography of the lot and the fact that they don't have any access off of Monterey to their house. So it was a different circumstance than sort of a standard lot.
Thank you for remembering that.
Commissioner Ortiz, do you have any more?
I have no further questions.
Yeah, you know, I know that along your street there, that some of your neighbors do enjoy that back deck, and I don't have a real issue with that, because when I went there, really, especially with your little railing pony wall, you really, it's not a privacy issue, and you can enjoy that ocean view. But at the same time, I really don't find a finding for, given a variance for the FAR on this one. And so I'm pretty much in agreement with the rest of the commissioners here, and I think although it's a beautiful house, I hate to see you have to lose that front deck. I think that may be your best option here. So having said that, does anyone like to make a motion?
I'll move approval of the application with the conditions as stated, but denial of variance.
Excellent.
So we have a first and a second in the discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And it passes with the variance. Thank you, without the variance. Thank you, sir. Okay, moving on, we're going to go to Item B, which is 224 San Jose Avenue, and ask for staff report.
Okay, thank you, commissioners. Before you this evening is 224 San Jose Avenue. This is a historic home in the Central Village zoning district. The application is for a new garage, and the applicant is proposing to merge the two lots. They'll place a new garage on the property, and are proposing second-story living space above the garage. This application requires a design permit and a variance for the onsite parking. Here you can see the property with the yellow outline. That's for the full property once it's merged. The highlighted yellow section is the second parcel that's on the property, where currently that area is utilized for a parking space. In looking at this aerial, it's important to notice that in the Central Village, the homes are, it's a very dense neighborhood. There is very limited parking throughout the neighborhood. The newer homes that have come in do have parking onsite, but there's a lot of historic dwellings throughout the neighborhood which do not have onsite parking. So this home is fortunate in that they currently do enjoy an onsite parking space. This is the site plan, and showing the new garage in reference to where the lot line currently exists. The new garage will be on the location of where the parking space currently is. You can see there's a home to the side, a neighboring property. There's no windows on the first story of that home, but there are windows on the second story. There's a small cottage that sits behind the garage, in which there is one window that is within about five feet of the new proposed garage. Now I'll go through the design permit. The top of the structure will be board and bat. There'll be a copper bellyband around this, on the floor level, and the bottom of the new garage will be a three-part stucco. There's a metal sectional door proposed, and the front structure that you're seeing, the one-story structure, is the historic structure onsite. The architect, or the designer in creating this design, did not want to attach to the single-family home, wanted to do a separate unit. This did not require a conditional use permit, because it is not attached to the historic unit, but it did require review by a historian, because it will be on the same lot, to make sure that we're in compliance with SEQA, and that there's no impact to the historic structure as proposed. Next, this is the rear elevation of the structure, so you can see the large doors in the back, again, board and bat on the top, stucco on the bottom. There's knee braces and a small shed roof over the doorway. And the side elevations, and you can see the shadowing of the historic structure and how it's relative to the west elevation. I want to talk for a moment about the historic review on this property. There was not a final determination by Leslie Dill, our contracted historian, architectural historian, in support of the project. There were a couple items which were not addressed. One is the double gable end at the, on the front elevation of the building. It was suggested that the double gable end by Leslie Dill, that this was creating a false history to the building and utilizing an element typically found on historic buildings. When I brought this to ARK in-site, our architect and also our historian didn't agree with that direction from the architectural historian. They felt that since the existing cottage does not have a double gable end, it was not creating a false sense of history, because it was unique to the new structure, and also that the overall design with the metal garage and copper elements, that it wouldn't be mistaken for a historic structure, especially with a garage at the first level. So in that, the planning commission has the authority to make findings in support of this, that it's, that there is no impact to the historic structure, so you have the final determination. This is on the local level, it's not on the state or national level, this building. So it really is up to the commission this evening to make a finding of whether or not there's no impact to the historic structure that would trump the recommendation by Leslie Next, I'd like to discuss parking. When the application came in, there was originally two spaces proposed, one within the garage, and then a second space that was along the side of the property. I will note that the plan said that that was a 10-by-20 space. The actual distance between the building and the property line, according to the survey, is 9.5 feet, so I want to draw that to your attention. So it wasn't a legal parking space. They would have had to request a variance for the slightly under 10-feet-wide space. So when this application came in and went before the Architectural On-Site Review Committee, this second spot, it was noted that it would actually remove two on-street parking spaces, which is extremely problematic in the village due to the current issue with many homes needing on-street parking. So with that, the elimination of those two spaces, and this is what it looks like today from the street, those two spaces that you see there, the red truck and the Subaru, would be removed, and one onsite parking would be proposed on the site. So Public Works did not support that side driveway. We asked them to take that off the plan, and in doing so, only one space remains on the site. To support a variance, there must be special circumstances tied to the property, and also a finding of that you're not granting a special privilege. The special circumstance that staff drafted up in the staff report is that there is a historic structure on the site. This project could have been designed to have two onsite parking spaces if they had placed additional living space on top of the historic home, and they could possibly have done a lift system within a garage on the single space. So for that reason, that the original historic home, the cottage, was not touched, we found that we supported the variance. And one other item that I did want to bring up is the turning radius into the driveway. In reviewing this, the Public Works Director, more recently, had concerns about the turning radius coming into the driveway because of the two onsite, on-street parking spaces along Cherry Avenue. As you can see, there'll be two spaces that lead up to the parking, and this is a one-way street in which a car will have to make a pretty tight right-hand turn into that, the garage as proposed. And in doing so, when a car is parked on an on-street parking space, the tires have to be within the area that's designated for the public parking, but actually, the front of the car or the rear of the car can actually hang over that spot when there isn't a spot right behind it. So in that scenario, there is concern that if a car is hanging over in front of the driveway access, we often get calls in these situations where we've allowed a garage, and then people are not able to access their garage because of folks being parked in the street that extend in front of their driveway a little bit. So just something to note, it would be, the Public Works Director, in taking another closer look at this, had suggested the ideal situation would be to move the structure a little bit where the arrow's pointing to the left, so that there'd be more of a turning radius to get in. But again, there is a structure, a two-story structure, right along the property line, in which the impacts to the neighbor would be great. So wanted to just bring that to your attention. One other part of this application is that it originally came in with a kitchen noted on it. It would actually fit under our definition of a minibar. There was a refrigerator proposed, as well as a sink. We added a condition to the staff report that said that the sink drain has to be less than 1 and 1/2 inches as permitted. They've agreed to take out the refrigerator, and then it was very clear that no stove tops, refrigerators, or ovens are allowed in the new living area, and that the new living area cannot be used as a separate second dwelling unit. So this condition would be on there. If there was ever a question that came out, we could go out and inspect it and check on it, but as you know, stove top changes are made sometimes. So there is still concern of, it may, there could be a connection made with this application to the sink, and if you'd like to further condition this application to not have a sink within the second floor, so that it's assured that folks utilize the kitchen within the main dwelling, that you could take it to that level. Staff is recommending approval of the application for 224 San Jose Avenue, based on the findings and recommendations and the conditions within our report. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Any questions for staff?
Not at this time.
I did. The first one I had was, when I went last weekend to look at it, I didn't see the posting, and I probably missed it. Was it?
So I, we did post it the first time. Someone must have taken it off, and we went out and reposted it after I received your email, so.
Okay, because this is in a tight neighborhood there, and if posting were ever to be important, I think, you know, I'm concerned about how many days this was posted for, and whether all the neighbors who might be affected really had an opportunity to see it. So the other question I- So the other question I had was on the two parking spaces on San Jose. When I looked at this, it looked to me like the front one, yeah, that's the good photo, the last one where the turning radius photo shows it good. It looked like the front space could be moved forward more, so you'd really only lose one.
So there's a sight line requirement in which we need to keep the, the parking spaces, I believe have to be eight feet from the corner.
I just went around that twice today, and that's for the, I need to.
That's tight. Any other questions for staff?
I just want to clarify one. The, the lot that they're talking about is a lot of record, so it's a legal lot of record. So if they didn't merge the two lots, then that would be a developable lot.
So if, if the applicant came in today with an application for that lot, we would have them do a title search, so that we would get, we could see the title as it changed over the years and ensure that that's a legal lot of record. At this point, we're going off of the parcel map and the APNs, which are tax, tax records. So at this point, I could not conclusively say to the planning commission that that is a legal lot of record. It would take some, we'd have to go back and ensure that through title search. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, is the applicant here, does he like to speak?
Hi, my name's Dennis Calvert, and I'm the owner. And it's a good opportunity for me to be here, and I'm pleased to be able to have the opportunity to improve this property. I love the property. I think it's going to be a beautiful design for it. I'm in compliance with any of the conditions for approval that you come up with. And I have my architect here, Daniel Silvernail, if there's any questions that you may have too.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Calvert. Any questions for Mr. Calvert?
I have a question for Mr. Calvert. If we decided tonight that we would want you to not put the sink in and possibly put in the conditions of approval that this would not be a separate vacation rental, would you be amenable to those two conditions?
Well, you'll get a comment on that, too. I actually would like to have the sink there, so that if it was a minibar of some type, you know, occasionally I'd like to have something to be able to dispose of the, you know, the wastewater and things like that.
Would you be amenable to putting in the conditions that that unit would not be ever used as a separate vacation rental?
Oh, I think so, yeah. I have no intentions of doing it myself right now.
Well, you know, you have to think about the future, too.
Yeah, yeah.
Future impacts, so I would appreciate that. That would be great.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, if the property was ever sold, I wouldn't, I would have to put that down in some type of conditional of understanding to the.
I think it would go along with the, it would, it's, I don't think you would necessarily have to do it, except disclose it, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we just have the intention of just making it look beautiful, really. That's it.
We really appreciate your keeping the character of the existing home and the village, really a lot.
Thank you very much.
So can I ask a question about the garage door? Just because I was sort of confused when it talked about a metal garage door. I mean, is it going to be metal colored? I mean, I got confused on that. Ours, it's just a typical?
You know, I'm, I'm in approval of whatever you decide if you make a suggestion about the garage door. I mean, I think most garage doors are beautiful, as long as they're done nicely and they have good materials. I'd like to have whatever's done to be in, in such a way so architecturally, according to what the historian brought up, that it looks, you know, it looks good. You know, so I'm, I'm okay with that.
So it's going to be painted to go along with, I mean, are you talking about a white roll-up door? What's being proposed?
I think, I think that wasn't really addressed when we went into the design, but I liked a nice white roll-up door, maybe some type of small little windows maybe in it that would, that would relate to the structure of some type perhaps, I don't know.
May I?
Absolutely.
I haven't been properly introduced. May I introduce myself? I am Daniel Silvernail, architect. I'm here in the capacity of standing in for Dennis, who, as you know, had to recuse himself. And I'm here in the capacity of his partner. We're formerly a partnership, Silvernail Norton Architects. Actually, Silvernail Norton Associates Architects. And this is not my first time before you. I was here last month. Let me see. I will speak specifically to the question. It's shown as a metal sectional door. Maybe not necessarily the penultimate choice for that door, given the nature of the original historical house. Perfectly acceptable to go with a wood door. If I may, I would just like to speak to the point that the, I think it was a really good design decision to keep the two buildings separate. I think it did a big favor to the original house. It really honors the original house. And I think that the architecture of the proposed second building is compatible with the original house, yet, yet different, so that it doesn't ape the original house. Dennis just wants an extra bedroom. And given the site situation and the constraints, he's, he has to have parking and he has to, he doesn't want that bedroom to ruin the original house, so we're doing it over in the new building. As far as the concern of the staff of parking or of Public Works, the difficulty of getting in and out of the garage, there's already a parking space there. So this, this is not creating a new difficulty. This is the, this is the same difficulty, whether it's a garage there or an open parking space. As far as the sink goes, this gentleman just wants a wet bar. That's all he's asking for. He's not looking for a second unit, not looking to get a rental unit, none, nothing of the sort. He just wants a wet bar. So with that, I'll, I'll stand down and await your questions.
So I had one more question for Dr. Calvert. So would you have a concern if we put a condition in there about the garage needs to be used for car parking? You know, I'll be honest, my concern is that you have a parking place there now that's open and get used. We're adding on to your property. And oftentimes, you know, we see, once the garage gets built, it gets filled up with various things that people have, so the parking space goes away.
Yeah, absolutely.
So you wouldn't have any problem if we added?
Absolutely. The garage, the, the, the parking space, the parking space is absolutely necessary. In fact, right now, as Daniel was saying, the parking space that's there now is technically large enough that you could almost put two cars into it. So driving into it has never been an issue, even with large trucks that have gone in there for construction or something.
So I had one other minor point. In going down and looking at this, I realized that the garage is actually being set back further on the lot than the house is or the neighbor's house. And I had concerns about the sort of cottage that's behind it that has sort of the one window, which is really sort of their light and air. And I was wondering if the building even could come forward, you know, you know, as little as a foot, maybe as much as two feet, because you can't park in front of it. That's, that's not to, to give a little more light and ventilation to your neighbor behind you. And I didn't know if that would be a problem for people, because it seems like it would be, it would help out your neighbor quite a bit to not be blocking that one window that's in, in a bedroom in that house behind you.
If, if I may? My reasoning tells me that the closer the garage is to the street, the more difficult will be the parking maneuvering. So the trade-off is the neighbor versus the users of the street, both.
Well, do you think a foot would have a huge impact, because it would help the neighbor a lot?
Well, conventionally, a garage would be set back 20 feet from the street to allow for safe maneuvering and negotiation. So the farther from the street, in my opinion, the better.
Yeah, I just, I just think it would be a.
I think it's worth discussing.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much, Mr. Calvert. Anybody else from the audience that would like to discuss this project?
Hello, my name is Murray Hartman. I live at 108 Cherry. I live directly across the street from the cottage and virtually across the street from what I'll call the chalet, the new addition. Just because they're different-looking. The only thing I like about the project is they didn't attach it to the cottage. They didn't build a cross to the cottage. They didn't block my view over the top of the cottage. In that respect, I like that portion of the project. But I have a front deck overhanging my driveway, and if you advance the house towards the street, the, the project towards the street, it gets close to my deck, and it interrupts my privacy to sit on the deck. So I guess that's my first, just to get to your point, because it really wasn't on my list of things to talk about, but I just wanted to tell you my concern for advancing the house towards the street. Because, you know, the house portion is cannily or to pass the garage portion by a couple feet.
Right.
So if you move the garage, the house advances towards the street as well. So it seems like the house is then on the street. The cottage is already on a zero lot line with just the sidewalk there. So it seems like I would want, as a neighbor, to have that house moved back a little bit. The first issue, as everybody would believe people have, is the parking. And the parking being that whether you're offering him a special privilege or not by allowing him to have only one parking space. So the house is being expanded to up to four bedrooms and three bathrooms now, and over-doubling the square footage of the living space of the structure. And we're only asking him to maintain one parking space. And as you noted, there is the suspect of chance that they'll convert the garage into a family room, and then where we'll have more living space and again, less parking space. We lost two, maybe three parking spaces on the next street over on 107 Park. They eliminated the two or three street parking spaces and the development that got to be built there with the living unit above and a studio and a bonus room down below. I think they only really provided about one and a half spaces of parking there. And they got rid of several street parking spaces. So it's concerning when you're just giving away parking spaces and granting the variance, because eventually, everybody can just build whatever they want, and they don't have to achieve any parking ratio. So that's my concern with parking. But overall, if I had to suck down a project, I would rather have the two separate structures than have the structure eclipsing the original cottage. So I'll agree with that. The one sink issue, when I read on page 52 and 54, number 14, in your, in what you posted online, it says there's only one, going to add one sink to the living area. So that's the entire upstairs is the living area, and there's already a bathroom upstairs which contains a sink. So how could there be another sink? So that would be my question about the sink. Because the, because the end-all concern with having the wet bar up there and having the, the structure separate from the house, with a separate entrance from the house, is that it's going to be a separate living unit, and now I got to deal with a separate living unit in the, a vacation rental zone. So now they're going to have two vacation rentals there and only one off-street parking space. So that's my concern with this issue of the sink. Because the, the real issue with the sink isn't the sink, it's whether it can be used as a second living unit. I wish he could have his wet bar, but I don't want a second, second living unit. Thirdly, on page 74, we talk about the glass line, where the glass line in the chalet has to relate in some way to the glass line in scale and proportion and place to the historic fenestration that's already there. I don't see the relationship between the glass line and the chalet and the glass line in the historic cottage. The historic cottage is using a 2050 window, double hung. The glass line in the chalet is a 2040 window, and there's four of them across the front, creating a 10 or 11 feet of glass line. There's no glass line like that in the, in the cottage. And when you have that huge glass line directly across from my deck, which is only now going to be 20 feet away, because it's a second-floor deck and a second-floor window, I'm worried about my privacy. It says in there that they would take respect to the neighbor's windows lines, but I live across the street, and they haven't really considered my perspective in any way. The neighbor adjacent to them with the western-facing window, that is a sort of like an eight-foot picture window for them. And when that structure's there, boom, it's going to block out their, their sunlight. So the concern there is then, can we scale the project at all? Because the second floor has a nine-foot sill before it hits the peak to the roof. So if they're going to do it, I, I didn't see a reflect, reflected ceiling plan, so I don't know if the roof is pitched with no sheet rock, flat ceiling. I assume they're going to have it pitched inside to the house. So if that's the case, why do we need a nine-foot sill? We could actually bring the house to an eight-foot sill and bring the house, the overall height of the house down by a foot, reducing its scale, which would give some light because of the hip roof, to that adjacent eastern-facing window of the neighbor. Especially if you, I mean, if you're trying to shift the house, the extra house left or right, I don't think you can, because you're already three feet from, from the setback line. So that's, that's my issue with, with the window lines, because those neighbors, they're not here, I assume, but I would assume that they feel like that building's going to block out their natural light within their living space, because they have an inverted floor plan in that house. Some observations that I still would have would be, there's an odd toilet room in the breezeway. There's a toilet in the closet in the breezeway separating the house from the, from the cottage, from the chalet. And I just feel that that's odd, because there's no sink there. And so that part of the design, I just find odd, but I don't know if I can do anything about it. And then the eve line, the distance between the house and the cottage and the chalet is only four feet, and the eve line from the chalet comes down over two feet. So you only really have a very small breadth of space between the two structures to let any natural light in there. So those are my biggest concerns with the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to address one thing that the gentleman said, and that is that we've, we've already determined that there will be a condition about short-term rental, the second unit will not be able to be rented out as a short-term rental, any kind of rental.
Right, the whole project can be rented out as a long.
Right.
Anybody else that would like to speak about this project before we bring it back to the commission? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing part and bring this back to.
I need to clarify one point with the staff. I think you, I think I understand what you said, but if the original parking space as planned were included instead of the garage, it would need a variance because it's too narrow. Correct?
Correct. It's nine feet, nine and a half feet wide, not 10.
Like 9'8" or something like that.
I'd like to ask the staff a question. So what is the logic behind not taking the total square footage that's being consumed on the property by the both houses together as the kind of parking, you know, we have a, how many square feet are both houses together?
That is what we looked at in order to come up with the parking requirement of, I'm They're required to have two onsite parking spaces.
I was looking at it.
So residential up to 1,500 square feet must have two spaces total.
So you were, you were doing both. Great. Thank you.
Any other questions? About discussion?
There's a lot to discuss here. Yeah, I don't know, we just take them one, one thing at a time. I mean, personally, for me, I think there are certain things we like to give people when they give the city and the residents of the city something. And in this case, this gentleman is, is being somewhat sensitive in scale, in my view, to the rest of the neighborhood. But I'm a little concerned about the fact that we've got, this is on the very brink of the VR, is it VRU? That's a new term for me. I, you know, the, the visitors' area. The other half of the street. The other half of the street, the gentleman just spoke, is not in the visitor-use area. And so, I think we have to be more careful than we would if we were deep in that zone, that overlay zone, than we would be right on the perimeter. And understand that the people across the street are not in that zone. So, we, you know, I think that there's a little balance there that I think we can get to tonight. I have other comments, but I wanted to start with that.
I'll jump in with my comments. I think this is a perfect example of where protecting and, and keeping a historic house has a significant impact on the, the property owner. And I agree as well that I think that he's keeping things to the scale and, and really trying to keep that historic presence, historic. I mean, he's, he's not touching it and he's moving away from it. I don't have any problem at all with the double gable, because I don't really see it as, as being a mock of faux historic element. And the rest of the design, I think, is, is very compatible with the existing. The issue that I really had a hard time with, and I, I went to the property and I sat there for a long time and, and looked and tried to figure out how you could get more parking down there. Because it does feel like it would be the perfect short-term rental for a group of people, which is going to be more than one car. And the, the parking spaces, this is something that I've talked about with staff, the parking spaces as marked, your tires have to be inside those marks, but there, there is overhang and we have huge numbers of phone calls to City Hall probably every day most of the summer about people quasi-blocking driveways or completely blocking driveways and making it impossible to get in and out. I agree with staff's recommendation that the side parking space not be utilized as parking, because that does give up two public parking places. And around the corner where we did, I believe we only gave up one parking place to the other one, and they gave two inside parking spaces. And I don't know if staff can confirm that or not, but I'm torn on this one. So, you've got parking on one hand, you've got the historic preservation on the other hand, and those are really tight, because that is the heart of our biggest parking problem.
Well, I agree. I'm, I'm really torn on this one, too. And, you know, part of it could be simply the materials that, that was presented to us. Because when you look at the plans that they gave us, they show it as a second unit. They call out a kitchen, they call out a living area, they call out a bedroom and a bathroom. So, you know, you immediately go there that that's what it's going to be. So, you know, I think for me, that they need to really show that this space up here, that they're going to be adding, you know, two bedrooms and a bathroom. And it should be designed so it functions as sort of two bedrooms and a bathroom, not, not as a second unit. And, you know, I, I certainly couldn't, the sink would have to go for me, there would have to be conditions about it not being a second unit, not being rented out as a second unit. And then, you know, after I go through all of that, you know, I get to the point, well, suddenly, you know, we've got a four-bedroom, you know, three-bathroom house that has one parking space. And I, I can't, I'm having difficulty putting that together.
What you hear now about Capitola is that it's a victim of its own success, and this is a good example. I mean, there's such demand for during the summer and during other parts of the year for people to come to Capitola and enjoy all the amenities we have in Capitola that we're trying to squeeze as much in, and everyone's trying to squeeze and squeeze here and squeeze there. This one really has that feel to me. I've mentioned before that I have property that's near a vacation rental, that it's very small, actually, and every weekend, there's four or five vehicles there when they're renting it out. So, this one, it doesn't help to make, put in a condition that it's not a separate rental, because as was pointed out, you just rent the whole, the whole package to somebody, and it can be two families or three families or whatever, and they use everything. The plans, I, I noticed the same thing. When you look at the plans, it looked like somebody was creating a separate unit, but that would be if it weren't vacation rental. And I'm, we're not accusing Mr. Calvert of any, in the agenda here, but in this case, it's really, it's vacation rental and one big vacation rental here with one parking space. Now, I'm not seeing the connection between the historic, we always, we're always granting variances because of the preserving historic values, but I'm not seeing the connection here. It's not close enough to me that the preservation of the historic values requires the granting of a variance. Because if they came in to do something else, say it wasn't a historic building, they would have a problem also, because that parking space on the side requires a variance. So, I, I just, I don't think that the justification is real strong in my mind, and I'm, we're all having difficulty with the application, because there are very, there are things that are very good about it, that we like, but it just seems to be pushing the envelope a little bit to me.
I have a, for a comment, I have a question of staff. Recently, you sent out, Rich, a document talking about, I guess, a new state code that's come out discussing ADUs and living above garages, that parking can't be required of those, additional parking can't be required. Can you comment on how that would...
Wouldn't qualify for a second dwelling unit. It's not big enough.
Okay. I was just curious on what the...
I think that comment's correct. I mean, the zone, you can have multiple units on a lot, but it wouldn't be a second dwelling unit as defined. So, Governor Brown, I believe, last week or the previous week signed new legislation in the law that addresses second units, the intent being to streamline the permitting process and to increase the state stock of affordable housing. Made a number of changes, and depending on your perspective, it's either really good for us in terms of timing with our code update or kind of a bummer, but, you know, we'll, we'll try to amend the ordinance so it reflects current state law. One of the things it does do is restricts an agency's ability to require parking. Doesn't say you can't require parking, but in some cases, for instance, if you're near a bus stop or some other transit stop, and I forget the distance, you can't require additional parking. And there's a number of standards there. Whether or not this one would fall in, I'd really have to look closer. But it, it will, you know, impair some of our regulatory abilities to control second units.
Well, I, I'm also, I mean, I'm sensitive to the congestion, the parking down there. I spent some time looking at it. There's, it's obviously being used today to be, as a parking spot. It's the existing parking spot, but, and people will like to say that maybe I'm too lenient towards homeowners, but, you know, I think homeowners have the opportunity to build. I think the fact that they're willing not to tie it to the house, leave that as a historical place, build and do an improvement for parking with the living cores above with a bedroom. I don't have an issue with the wet bar. I don't know that they're going to be cooking meals. There's no stove or anything up there. I think those are conveniences that other people enjoy. And so, I don't have an issue really with the, the turning radius to get in there, the parking issue to get in there, although the, the parking is, is always an issue in that area. To me, I don't have a real big issue with the variance, with the extra bedroom being added above. I guess the alternative would be that they, you know, come back and try to do something to the historical house itself. So, for me, I, although I, I see the issues of that congested area, I don't see the issue where we can't trust a person to say that it's not going to be used as an ADU. We put that in our conditions and, you know, let people, you know, enjoy those improvements without second guessing that they're going to someday, you know, make that a rental that's going to impact more than what's already been impacted down there. But those are my comments.
So, I have a question for staff. So, let's say that this gentleman, this homeowner, decided to, you know, keep the lot separate and sell off the other lot. It's a lot of record, probably. So, somebody can build on that lot. And what are they going to build on that lot? They're, they're going to build a house, which is probably even more impactful than this would be, because it will have a kitchen. It will be a completely separate, you know, maybe, maybe he can't, well, they're already divided. It's not like he can't divide them. They're already two separate lots. He has no parking on his, so if they were together and he has no parking, he can't divide them, because he has no parking on his front lot on San Jose. But they're already divided. So, what if he wants to sell it?
But what, look at the property line, and what could be built on the new lot is...
We've, we've done this before. We've, up on Depot, we have, we have allowed people to do this.
But what, what could be built on a fifteen-square, fifteen-foot lot is different than...
It's still a kitchen and, you know, probably at least as intense a use as this, this project would propose, and probably more impactful.
Wouldn't there be setbacks? I mean, how, what would be...
No, there are no setbacks in the village.
There's twenty percent open space requirement on the lot, and then there's no yard requirements, except that ten percent of the lot shall be developed as landscaped open area, partially fronting open to the street, so...
So, we would have three hundred and sixty foot print, approximately footprint.
Times two. And a lot of small houses are being built that size these days.
But... And just a reminder that we would need to make sure it's a legal lot of record.
Right. So, do you think, you know, again, I said for me, you know, it's like this, this really isn't like someone's adding two bedrooms and a bathroom, because of the configuration and the way it's designed.
And a minibar doesn't need a full-size refrigerator.
Right. And, you know, I'm, I'm wondering if we gave them the opportunity to come back with sort of a new design, which, you know, clearly is two bedrooms and a bathroom, and it's designed so they can function and be used as that, as normal people would do it, we would be more comfortable with it, or...
I still have the problem if it's a, I mean, it's, it's a four-bedroom, it's a four-bedroom house with one parking place.
And I, I, I took the same thought process that Commissioner Ortiz went down, which is if it's a separate lot of record, and just assuming for a second that it is, and it's sold, and it, they came in to build something on it, because you can develop existing lots. And there would be, it would be tighter in its construction, and you could probably have, you know, a five hundred square feet or so living space on top of a garage, because they would have to have at least one parking place. Then the cottage still sits with no parking. You've got two separate dwellings, completely separate dwellings, and, but, but it's not big. So, you're not bringing, you're not bringing in two families to share a vacation rental. You have a small vacation rental and another, I don't know, I kind of went spin around in my head. So, what, which is the right direction for that part of the community?
Along with my feeling like this, I could possibly go for this, I would have to address the neighbors, some of the neighbors' concerns. I really don't think it needs a sink up there. I want to make sure that it there's no 220 upstairs, you know, plumbed in to begin with, piped in to begin with. I want to make it as hard, not on you, but on, you know, what if you sell or whatever, in the future, this is never considered a unit that's rentable or, you know, they're going to have to go a long way to make it that way.
I understand your concerns about not making it a rentable unit as it stands alone. And I know that they said they don't want 220, but I, I mean, I, I have a garage, I have a welder, it's a 220 welder. I use that in the luxury of my own garage. I have a sink that I can wash my hands. If I want to make a pot of coffee, I don't have to stick it underneath a little sink in the, in the bathroom. I have a separate sink. I, I, I think sometimes if we're trying to tie, because I understand the concern is not making it a second unit. But it doesn't mean that we can't address that in our conditions, but allow the luxuries of, if he wants to have a coffee pot, and there he has a coffee pot, if he wants to have a welder in his garage, you could have a welder, although that's not a condition they're asking for. I, I, maybe I just, maybe I'm just being too lenient, but I think it's a compromise for that piece of property, because, again, it's a legal lot. And who knows what the, a plan would come through if that lot was sold. But I think this is a nice compromise. And I, I'm not really sure why we need two bedrooms when you could have a, I see it as a nice man cave, but maybe I'm just a guy, but it's a guy, it's a place to have a garage, a TV, you know, a little getaway area, and so, maybe I'm, I'm not as...
So, I see this as one of those projects when it's, when they start building it, where people in the neighborhood are very critical of, how did the city approve that? How did the planning commission approve that? There's no parking, and we're going to have four more cars here in the first weekend that they have that situation. So, I'm concerned about the public notice to this. And we, what we know is that it was originally posted, and that disappeared, and at some later date, very close to this hearing, it was posted again. So, I don't know if that, that concerns me, because I, and of course, people don't really follow what's going on in the application process, but when it starts getting built, then we'll hear from them. But I, given the congestion and the squeezing into a small lot here that we're about to embark upon, I...
So, are you asking that we continue it, so it can be properly posted?
It was noticed, though, right?
It, it was noticed as well, so I have concern that if somebody meaning, like, took down the noticing, how can we say that that won't happen again? But we did, as soon as it was brought to our attention, we went out and put noticing back on the property, and Joanna sent me a picture.
The proper noticing was mailed to...
So, improper noticing was mailed, it was put on the agenda.
Was advertised in the newspaper? For what, that's what?
It was what?
It was also because it's a variance, it was advertised in the newspaper as well. For what?
Who reads the...
Who reads the legal ads in the newspaper?
Reads the legal notices.
Seems like we met our intent, though, of doing our due diligence and noticing.
Yeah, okay. But I just go back to the idea, it's not so much a separate unit. To me, I'm struggling with the idea whether it really makes any difference if you rent out your garage, or you just have your children living in your garage with their cars. I mean, it's sort of the same functional result, but, and particularly, I mean, I don't know if we've emphasized enough that we're on the edge of the vacation rental zone up against a non-vacation rental zone here, and the impact of that.
I do think it makes a difference if you have part of your family living in a house as opposed to a vacation rental, because as you're saying, people with vacation rentals end up putting more, because it's short-term, they're on vacation, they end up packing a house with more people, and there's more cars. So, there is a difference.
Yeah, I, I think the vacation rental is definitely much more intense. I mean, my family, we do it, and we end up with all our children and all their cars, and we're noisier than we normally are, because we're on vacation.
But the point is, it doesn't matter if this is a separate unit or not, then, because it's, it's the number of people that can enjoy the property, the number of people that can share in the cost of the week, or two weeks, or whatever it is.
Well, let's take a look at it this way.
If it was a separate unit, you know, it, it may behoove them to rent it, one of them full-time.
I'm going to make one other point that's, it gets lost a lot, and that is that public parking is public parking. And it seems to me that the residents of that area in Capitola have as much right to use the public parking as the visitors that come. So, there's one parking place on that property today. We're not reducing that, we're just not increasing it. And the, the people that come to that unit have as much right to fight for the public parking places as anybody else does.
So, you, you don't think it would be possible if someone came and they had two smaller cars, they could park two cars where the vacant lot is, vacant area is right now?
I think they could. I mean, if you get two Mini Coopers in there, or two Smart Cars, you could, you could do it. When I was there today, it was, or the other day, it was... When I was there today, it was, or the other day, it was a crossover. So, I don't think you could get a full-size pickup truck down there, or a Tahoe, or an Escalade, or something.
There was a full-size pickup parked there.
Oh, really? When you were there?
Four-wheel drive.
Oh, there you go. But my point is that the, the public parking, we're not, we're not allowing them to reduce the number of public parking spaces, but the people that come to use that unit have as much right to those parking places as anybody else.
Still reducing parking places to the residents who live around that area? You know, you're...
Potentially.
Potentially.
Potentially having two more, one or two more cars come, because it's going to be bigger.
Because it's in the vacation rental overlay zone.
Yeah. I, I, you know, I do see the point of not allowing parking variances in the village for these kinds of things. I don't know. This is, this is a toughie.
This is a hard one.
This is really tough.
You know, I think, I, real quick, I think we're at, we've got the information we want, but go ahead.
I understand, and I know this is an exception, and I appreciate it. In following the deliberations, I can see that perhaps the outcome might be to deny the variance for the parking. In my mind, thinking ahead, that gives the applicant, the design team, no recourse but to go back to the drawing board. The non-discretionary option here would be to have two parking spaces to the north.
Actually, you know what, sir? I, please. This isn't a time for do this, all right? So, your option will be after we actually make a vote?
I understand.
If you don't like the, the outcome, is to appeal it, which is an option that's open to you. But if we allow this back and forth, it just creates this dialogue that's going to make it very difficult for us to, to move on in our process, so...
I understand, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. So, I'll bring it back and just try to continue the discussion, see if anybody would want to jump in there.
Well, you can always deny it without prejudice, you know, or deny it without prejudice allows them to go, come back and, right, under the same, you know, proposal, so I don't think that's a problem. And I think under this, we would probably do that, because maybe they have a way of working this out.
So, is someone willing to make a motion, to have a motion, or...
Make a motion to deny without prejudice? And that means that they can come back without resubmitting...
Fees, no new fees.
But it would have to be noticed?
Yes.
And we could do a really good job of putting the notice up, so that it wouldn't be easy to take it down?
We could.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
So, we have first and second, all of us in favor?
Aye.
No, for me.
The motion carries four-one, with Commissioner Smith, Westman, Ortiz, and Newman in favor, and Chairperson Walsh against.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, sir. So, with that, we will move on to our final item on the Public Attorney United, 221 Monterey, and we'll...
I mentioned, I'm, I'm going to have to change myself on this one, so I will be back. We'll be back for the next part of the meeting.
I knew you were going to play, but you're not wearing a hat. I can't win. All right, I can do something.
You can give that to our secretary. Oh, there you are. Don't, don't be intimidated. It's really not that tough.
You saw how we're acting today. My stuff.
My name's Marty Formico, and I'm the owner of 221 Monterey. So, thank you for giving the opportunity to chat.
I'm out. Pardon? I don't think we're following the call here. Oh, yeah, no, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. We, we'll go through a staff report, and then I'll call you up when it's your turn. Thank you. Thanks, Rich. Sorry.
Good job.
So, we'll start with the staff report, and then after the staff's report, we'll have questions for the staff, and then we'll go to Public Attorney. That's right?
Okay. Thank you, Commissioners. This evening, the application before you is located at 221 Monterey Avenue. This is for a major revocable encroachment permit and a conditional use permit for a new suspended garage, which is attached just slightly to a historic home. So, a major revocable encroachment permit requires the planning commission's approval as well as a conditional use permit. And the reason for a conditional use permit this evening is because it is attached slightly to the historic home. As you can see in the zoning map, this is located in the RM-LM zone along Monterey Avenue. And a major theme throughout my presentation is that Monterey Avenue is a multimodal transportation corridor for Capitola that connects to our village and beach, and is also a connection from our public parking area utilized by visitors. So, on this slide here, you see the historic home. It's the yellow home that is set back from the road. The applicant is proposing a new suspended driveway. In yellow, you see the historic home, and the, in brown is the existing porch that is on the home. The property line, you can see right where the end of the porch and the beginning of the suspended driveway begins. So, I'm sorry I didn't highlight that on the slide, but here is the property line here. And the area, the majority of the suspended garage is located in the city right-of-way. So, there's, it's, the, the majority of the project is within the right-of-way, and therefore the need for the revocable encroachment permit. The applicant is proposing a driveway that's fourteen feet wide, and the apron approach will be fourteen feet wide, and then also a, a walkway that extends from the sidewalk to the historic deck. This is the side elevation of the project, so here's the new suspended driveway. As you can see on the left hand of the slide, the existing deck. There's a two-foot gap between the existing deck and the new suspended driveway. That was during the historic review. This went back and forth between the designer and the historian, I want to say about three times, before it came to what you're seeing before you this evening. So, with the incorporation of that gap and design changes throughout, that's the final result. On this slide, you can see the lapped siding. It's going to match the home in color. There's tempered glass to provide some clearance to see through visually, and then also a redwood rail cap on top. During the architectural and site review, there was comments by our local historian that she had concerns of whether or not the, the driveway was too wide, and if the home would be visible enough from the, from Monterey Avenue as it looks in. Leslie Dill also weighed in on this and found that the suspended driveway is compatible, and felt that because this driveway is really at the level, it, it has a, the approach of the driveway from the street to the deck is at about the same level, that it will be, that the historic home will remain visible, and she did not see any issues with the proposed width of the driveway. In reviewing a major revocable encroachment permit, there are four criteria that have to be reviewed by the planning commission in order to issue a permit. One is the expense and difficulty to remove the, the improvement in, in the instance that there was street widening. So, yes, a suspended driveway would be very expensive to install. At this time, Capitola has no plans in the near future to widen Monterey Avenue, so yes, it would be expensive, but it's not in the foreseeable future, future to widen the street. Second is the size, scale, and aesthetic of the surrounding neighborhood. And in looking at this improvement, there's some concerns about the aesthetic, as the, the bushes and the hedge on the neighboring property would need to be trimmed down, and, but in terms of size and scale, as was reported in the historian's report, there isn't much, there's no concern over the size and scale, other than Carolyn Swift did have concerns about the width, as previously mentioned. Preservation of views, the, by creating this, the, there's no views impacted, other than privacy by the neighboring property owner, because their hedge will be, have to be brought down to thirty inches from grade. And I should note that that is in the city property, that hedge, so it actually is owned by the city. And it would be the, the city would require, if, if approved, that the applicant maintain that hedge at the required height. And then fourth, and this is the challenge within the application, is would, would the benefit to the applicant be determined to outweigh the detriment to the community? So, in this application, and I'll go through the surrounding circumstances, but it is an area, as we were just, within a stone throw away, talking about the challenges of the village and parking. And as this applicant is challenged by not having parking, we can see the benefit of allowing such a driveway, so that there would be onsite parking and a place for them to park when at the house. But the, the detriment to the community is that this is a multimodal, a very heavily utilized multimodal road, in which there are many pedestrians that come up and down this road, and cyclists, and also cars. And the impact of putting in a new curb cut along this road would, it would, the flow of pedestrians wouldn't be as safe, and for cyclists as well, and cars, because the maneuvers in and out of the new driveway. So, here is a picture of Monterey Avenue, and as you can see, there's two great sidewalks on either side of the street. We have a historic wall on the right-hand side of the photo. And you can see there's, the neighbor has a suspended driveway, and then as you go further up the street, there's another driveway that's shared. So, here's a aerial, I've highlighted 221. In the blue arrows are the two existing driveways along Monterey Avenue. The starred properties are the properties within this block that do not have onsite parking, the additional three. And I should, and in looking at this, where the stars are, you'll notice that everyone else along Monterey Avenue on this side of, on the same side of the street, does have access to onsite parking. So, 221 is unique in that they are the only ones along that block, along Monterey, on that side of the street, without parking. Across the street, it's not the same situation. These properties, there's the historic wall in front of the majority of them, and these properties access their parking through shared driveways that are, come through Depot Hill and Central Avenue. And as I mentioned before, this is a highly-traveled route for people coming down to visit the village, and the different aspects of the pedestrians, cyclists, and cars. So, really, in the staff report, when looking at, should this be granted the, as a major revocable encroachment permit, that last criteria of the benefit to the applicant is determined to outweigh the detriment to the community, in those situations, you would deny the permit. So, in staff's review of this, and because it is a heavily-traveled street, and we thought that the, this would outweigh the, it, it would outweigh the detriment to the community. So, staff is recommending denial of the, the application for 221 Monterey Avenue, based on the findings in the report. So, thank you.
Thanks. Any questions of staff?
So, I, I actually remember the sidewalk going in on that side of the street wasn't too long ago, maybe eight, ten years ago. It was part of, there was concern about, you know, the upper parking lot and people walking down and trying to get to the village. And I thought when that went in, you know, there was, there was a lot of discussion about having a bike lane on that side of the street. And I thought in our new general plan, we did include in our bike pathway system, having a bike lane ultimately, a bike lane was ultimately desirable on that side of the street, not just the one side of the street.
When this was reviewed by the Public Works director, there was no mention of future widening of the street, so I, I don't know if it's a shallow area of shared bicycle...
Because the sidewalk there had to be cantilevered over, you know? That was, that was part of that construction, and so, when it was discussed, having a bike lane in the sidewalk, I mean, the bike lane in the sidewalk, there was going to be significant cost issues related to, you know, the, the size of that. But I, I thought in our general plan, we have a bike lane, you know, future proposed bike lanes, that that was included as one of our...
I agree. I was going to bring up that point. I think there is something in the general plan.
You could be right. I'm going to try to validate that as we continue the discussion. I knew, I know we do have a bike master plan that's outside the general plan, but I think we referenced the general plan that we want to fulfill in all the recommendations.
Yeah, and it may be the bike master plan I'm talking about, but that it was our goal to put a bike lane on that side.
And I think that's part of staff's concern on it, and to be, to be honest about it, this is one we struggled with a little bit, because I think there is a benefit to providing additional parking space in the village. I mean, it's incrementally, it helps. But in general, you know, we do get probably a couple of people a year that come in and ask for additional curb cuts in the village, and we generally deter it. We tell them, you know, it's probably something staff's not going to support, particularly along Capitol Avenue, Monterey Avenue, places where they're pretty busy, and so that was sort of the basis for our thinking.
I, I have one more question. So, the petition the applicant gave us, you know, they talk about, he talks about providing two more parking spaces. And technically, yeah, the petition that you asked people to sign said, "I support two more." So, the one parking space, there, there will really be only one more parking space if it was approved, because the parking area is only for, the curb cuts only for a fourteen-foot-wide parking space.
That's correct, but I'll also note that there is a six-foot-wide walkway that extends to the home, so the entire width of what they're proposing is twenty feet wide. So, if they were, if it's engineered to the extent that it could carry two cars, and they could pull two cars in and maneuver them correctly with that twenty-foot-wide space, I, I do foresee that they could possibly park two cars on that suspended driveway. Katie, can I ask you to put up the photograph again, please?
Just a follow-up on Commissioner Westman's comment. There is a map in the general plan. It's projected here before you, and that area of Monterey Avenue does show a Class Two bike lane.
Okay.
Thank you.
Which slide?
The, the one where you see the yellow house that's next door that has a... So, the one next door, do you know how wide that driveway is?
I do not.
Okay.
I guess it'd be about, you know, sixteen to twenty feet, somewhere in that range.
More than twenty, but...
Yeah. It's wider than fourteen, for sure.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions for staff?
Yeah.
All right, then, Ms. Formico, if you want to come up, we'll listen to your presentation.
All right. Try again. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to, to speak about the benefits of a driveway. I guess first, let me say, I came from a family of eight. In our summer vacations, here in Cap, we're in Capitola, in eight-hundred-square-foot house on Capitol Avenue, near Shadow Brook. We would get our twenty-five cents and walk down, ski ball, and we'd have to be back for five-thirty for dinner. And the only point I'm making there is I care about Capitola and the quality of life here in Capitola. I still love coming to Capitola, and I hope to retire here, another property owner in Cherry, which needs remodeling, so I'll probably be back with you guys next year. But unfortunately, Cherry does not have a parking, and the mistake I made was buying it without parking. So, before I purchased this property, I, I inquired, right? Is there going to be a problem? Neighbor has a problem, and, and nothing seemed to be an issue. Nobody brought up an issue of, of it. I've, I've basically just looking to do the same thing London and I'll have next door, right? Which actually, a flat driveway actually a better vision to that, to the house. I've already spent over fifteen thousand dollars in fees, architect's soils, surveys, legal fees. Historical and coastal have given the green light. We have made changes. We did shrink the driveway based on those conversations with them. And then all of a sudden, Friday, Tuesday, it in the mail that Public Works doesn't, doesn't, doesn't like it. So, I guess let me make a few points. Obviously, there, there's many roads like this, where you've got a driveway and people going in and out of traffic, right? This, this exists all over the Bay Area, certainly in all the busy streets feeding into the, so ours, ours is no different from that. So, I'm not asking for anything special, and I've certainly made the changes that were requested of me. And while this will benefit my tenants, it'll also benefit the neighborhood, you know, taking cars off, off the driveway. You know, I spent three hours yesterday, took the day off to watch... You know, I spent three hours yesterday, took the day off to walk the neighborhood and knock on anyone that, and to see if I could get some support for this, so hence the petition. I mean, I'm kind of throwing this all together, you know, I didn't talk to Dennis about that student all myself, saying, "What's the issue?" 100%, nobody. Everyone was happy, they couldn't believe it. But I will say, some homeowners and the tenant were concerned. They say, "The city only cares about the visitors, they don't care about the residents that live here in the village."
Right.
Because, you know, I said I'm getting pushback all of a sudden, and they were all surprised with that. And again, if you give me more time, I'll get you 50 signatures, if that's, if that's what it'll take. There's some emails in there as well. But a big point, this is a personal driveway. You know, people go to work in the morning, they leave and come home. It's not an in-and-out driveway, right? It's very little use when it's all said and done. It, you know, it's not, you know, again, it's not where it gets come and go, where you'd have a big concern, the concern of this. I'm in the insurance business, and we assess risk versus reward, and I see this as 100% benefit to the neighborhood. Granted, it's small, but no cost to them. Obviously, it's my cost, you know, building it and taking it out if you decide to widen the street. And gets used maybe .001% of the time. And again, it's just like my neighbor. So, again, I'm not necessarily thinking, "I'm asking for a whole lot, I'm asking for what's there." And again, it's, I'll never get my money back out of doing something like this, but I do see, again, the benefit of having a little bit more parking in the village. And with that, I'd like to introduce Daniel Guin, who you've already spoken with. Thank you, though, for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Do you have any questions to me?
Any questions for Mr. Formico? No? Okay. Thanks, Daniel.
Daniel Silvernail of S&amp;N Associates Architects, representing the client. The project proposes a bit of a dilemma between, from a city planning perspective, in that the risk of creating a driveway approach could potentially pose a risk to public safety, as been mentioned. The current site provides no parking facilitation whatsoever, and thus, from the perspective of city planning, imposes a burden on parking facilitation within the village. Those people there now are parking elsewhere and creating a burden. Staff report identifies three concerns. Encroachment on future, potential future expansion of Monterey Avenue, establishing precedent for future applicants to create curb cuts, and three, public safety. Addressing each in turn, on the item encroachment on future potential widening of Monterey Avenue, yes, parking facilitation could impose a potential impediment. Yet, as we all know, widening the avenue is an extremely remote possibility, and were to go forward in anyone's lifetime, it's a revocable encroachment permit. The city will invoke that revocation, and the city will proceed. The cost, the difficulty alluded to, will be borne solely by the owner, not the city, or the future owner. So, although sites, staff cites the expense of the potential removal of the parking structure as burdensome, we all know that burden will be borne entirely by the property owner. As far as precedent, staff report recommends against the risk of establishing precedent for other curb cuts along Monterey Avenue. It should be noted that this application, and it has been noted by staff, we're talking about the west edge of the, of Monterey Avenue, the downhill side of the avenue. This is a specific condition pertaining to the east edge of the, of Monterey Avenue, not to the west edge, since the east edge, as been discussed, is an entirely different topography and an entirely different traffic condition. So, as regards precedent, this precedent actually already exists, as we see at 219 Monterey Avenue, immediate, immediately to the south. Monterey Avenue enjoys parking facilitation exactly as this applicant proposes to enjoy with this application. As regards compounding that precedent with the result of possibly creating an open gate for future curb cuts along this western side of the block, it should be noted that this address, 221 Monterey, and the precedent property next door at 219 Monterey, are completely and entirely unique to the block, inasmuch as they are the only two properties solely relying on parking access from Monterey Avenue, given the unique circumstance that they are entirely landlocked by adjacent parcels. They're completely landlocked, those two, only ones on the block. Item three, safety. Creating parking always creates some marginal additional risk as regards public safety. Yet, in the big picture, this one curb cut is only one of many hundreds throughout the village, within city limits, all of which pose some small risk to public safety. More importantly, it does not appear that there is any record of any pedestrian, bicycle, vehicular incident associated with the neighboring parking structure at 219 Monterey. None. Given that the parking facilitation at 219 has yet to demonstrably pose any additional risk to public safety during the entire course of its lifetime, it seems reasonable to assume that the risk to public safety posed by this application is de minimis, absolutely minimal, and that the tangible benefits accruing to this project, in relieving Capitola's parking burden, far outweigh any perceived but objectively unproven risks to public safety. That addresses staff concerns regarding those three items. I welcome your questions or quests, or concerns.
Any questions for the applicant?
No.
Oh, all right.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else in the public that would like to address this project tonight? No? Okay, seeing none, then I'll bring it, I'll close public comment, bring it back to Commission for comment.
So, I have a question for staff. I have quite a clear recollection of seeing photographs of the house that has the driveway there, as a historic house with a wooden driveway that went to it, I believe. That was provided by Carolyn Swift, who was our historian. Did she-
I saw a historic photo that had a wooden walkway that went down, almost like a sidewalk that came down along Monterey, but I did not see-
You're talking about the neighboring house?
Yeah.
I seem to recall seeing that old picture, too. And I was going to comment, I think that that elevated driveway next door has been there for decades, probably before incorporation.
I think that elevated driveway was built long, long ago, before the city was incorporated and was part-
There's one in front of 221 Monterey. That's where, that's where it was. And that was removed. There's one in front of my property. That's the picture. There's one around, I can dig it up, some, there may be told about it.
Oh, so, is your property that had the elevated driveway? Okay.
Well, the walkway, whatever-
Walkway? Okay.
Okay.
I'm going to jump in on this one and probably put my feet in my mouth big time. I went over there and spent a lot of time just watching and feeling, and if this were two houses down from the existing driveway, I'd feel different about it than I do. But it doesn't seem to me that being right next door to an already existing driveway, that it creates an extremely additive burden on public safety, or, you know, getting across that sidewalk. The relieving of the parking down in that terribly, terribly tight area of Cherry that we were just looking at with the other application, seems to me to be a good benefit to the community. So, when I weigh the benefits and the drawbacks, I've often driven by that house and wondered why it didn't have a driveway. That, I mean, I can't imagine living in a house that was completely landlocked and not being able to drive your groceries in. I don't understand why we limit the width of the driveway to 14 feet. I think that's kind of crazy, because if you're going to have a walkway and a driveway, it makes sense that you could put two cars there. And I rarely see two cars going in and out of the one next door. So, I'm not as concerned with the safety issues. As far as widening the road, I'd like to see it engineered so that that would be possible and they'd still have a sidewalk. You know, it's, I think it's almost 20 feet deep in its design, so if you widen the road, it's not going to make it so short that you couldn't still use it. So, I'm kind of leaning towards approving the, this project.
Okay. Commissioner Ties or Westman?
I'm moving towards approving this project as well. I think, you know, we, you know, these are, these are, these are, we've come across some really hard decisions tonight. There's no right decision for everybody in the decisions we had to make tonight. But, you know, I do think, I did look, we do have something in our general plan about widening that, but I agree with Mr. Silvernail, is that-
Yes.
Thank you. That, you know, that's probably not going to happen in our lifetimes. We've got a lot of public works that are, projects that are way more demanding than that, and that we're behind on, even though I think that there is a big demand for walkability and bikeability in our community, as witnessed by Vision Capitola. It was a huge, huge concern of people in this community. I think we could still work with, I don't think it precludes bikeability on that street. And I do think, as, as Mr. Silvernail mentioned, it's the property owner's responsibility. It's a revocable encroachment permit. If we decide to do that in the next 20 or 30 years, that's the way it's going to be. And in the meantime, we have parking for that neighborhood. One of the things that I'm looking at is, I'm trying to find an elevation, a web, would that be a west elevation? Just to see if there's any landscaping, or any buffering, or anything that can soften that. Is there, am I missing that on the plans?
I don't think there is, but I would certainly be open to-
I would be amenable to having staff. Yeah, there isn't an elevation that's, there's an east elevation and a south, but I'm not seeing a north or a west. And am I missing that? So, I would be amenable to having the staff work with the applicant to make that look as attractive as it can from the street, because people will be walking by. Those are my comments.
Okay. Commissioner Westman?
Oh, this is, it's, it is a difficult one, because of where it is on Monterey, and how Monterey goes up and curves, and, you know, I think there will be some, some traffic concerns and impact, but as the property owner said, you know, we're talking about the single-family house, we're not talking about, you know, a business going in there, and cars going in and out all day long, and I have a little bit of concern, you know, it was my recollection that we got to the 14-foot width on the driveway because of the recommendation by the city historian, that having a 20-foot wide would sort of dominate the view of the historical structure. But if we're going to have the six-foot walkway there and the 14 feet, and we're concerned about how this driveway is going to impact traffic on Monterey, seems the last thing we want to do is have a parking space that's difficult to maneuver into. I mean, it seems like if we're going to approve it, then it ought to be with a 20-foot wide curb cut, so both of the parking spaces can adequately be used, not with the six-foot sort of walkway there. So, for me, I would have to ask that, you know, we go back to the 20-foot curb cut, and I don't know how other people sort of feel about that.
All right, with that, I'm okay with that. I can see the cars coming and parking for, you know, the weekends and, and most of the high-traffic times, they're not going to be wanting to go in and out anyway.
Right. All right. Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
Katie, could we go back to a slide from the street view that actually shows that, there you go. So, my real concern on this really is a, and I use this bike lane, or I should say, use to use it every day, but not so frequently anymore, as I take my board down to the beach. And this is a crazy way to go down the hill on your bike, because it is really tight there with vehicles. And, and so, my one concern is, I see the way that the commission's leaning, and I, you know, I'm comfortable moving forward with it, but my one concern really is that hedge of Ivy, is that as you back out of that driveway, that you're blocked from the view from bicyclists and cars coming down that hill. And I don't know, I didn't, I'm not sure the address of the neighbor to the north of you there is amenable to working with-
The city hedge, isn't it?
Is that the city hedge?
The city hedge.
The city hedge, and it would need to be cut to be 30 inches.
Yeah, because that really, really hampers the view there. So, that would be my primary concern. And then, you know, you, I think the curb cut, one of the issues is going to be that drainage that's right there, and that's always a, so if you're on a bicycle, you have a tendency to want to go out in the traffic lane, because sometimes hitting those storm drains right there are a little bit area of concern, but I could probably move forward with it, with the hedge.
Would we want to add a condition in there that, you know, the property owner at 221 Monterey is responsible for maintaining that hedge at a certain height, so we don't add an additional burden on the city's-
On the city, right.
-public works crew to do that, to keep his driveway safe?
I thought that commission, condition was already in here.
I did, too. Currently, I do not have conditions in here, because it was written up for denial. When we bring back the minutes, we'll have the draft, we'll have the conditions in the minutes at the following hearing in November.
So, for clarification, am I hearing that the curb cut to be 20 feet wide? I would also concur that that allows more flexibility for maneuvering in and out of that driveway, not having to go over the curb and-
And I would, I would suggest that we reduce the level of that hedge even farther than 30 inches, just to minimize the impact and maximize the visibility that you have when you are maneuvering in and out of that driveway.
Yeah, I do think reducing that hedge, you know, is going to have a significant sort of privacy impact on the neighboring property there, so, and I don't know if we're going to go more than what's typically required.
And how far back are we asking them to, how far north are we asking them to take it back?
Well, for visibility, did Steve have any suggestions on the length of the hedge that comes down?
It would be for 15 feet from the edge of the driveway, it would be at 30 inches.
So, you're talking about 35 feet?
I could live with that, yeah.
Is it about 30 inches on this end of it?
So, for the example of the neighbors, it would be measured from this point here, 15 feet across.
So, that's about 30 inches there, I would think, since they have a driveway?
About 30 inches, I would say, and I would say that's probably about a good estimate of 15 feet.
Yeah, they probably- So, you're looking at going another 15 to 18 feet?
So, there'd be a, you know, a portion of this would be cut out, because now we've got a new 20-foot-
Right, 20 feet wide.
...wide, and then from, yes, another 35 feet.
Okay. So, is there someone that would like to make a motion, or?
I'll make the motion that we approve the project as designed, with the condition that the applicant work with staff on some kind of softening, some kind of plant-type softening, to soften the driveway and the 20-foot curb cut, and the condition that the owner at 221 be responsible for keeping the hedge at a maximum of 30 inches for 15 feet from the edge of the driveway.
Okay, so, we have a motion, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And it passes. Congratulations.
Congratulations. And thank you so much for being such a wonderful articulator, both of you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
And I'll come back for Cherry, please.
We won't be here.
So, that concludes our... That concludes the public hearing portion. We'll move on to director's report. And I guess we can bring Commissioner Newman back up for the closing ceremonies here.
Just a couple of quick items, Mr. Chairman. A couple of items coming up on city council agendas for your information. On October 27th, we're going to discuss the Village Parklet Pilot Program with city council. Initially, we're looking at 13th, that's been pushed out to October 27th. Again, we'll pass on the planning commission's serious concerns about that program, and I would invite somebody from the planning commission to attend.
Yeah, I think we've elected Commissioner Westman to it.
The 27th?
It's the 27th.
And it's his birthday.
Oh, that'll be a nice happy birthday for him.
That's too good.
Moving into November, on 13th, as I mentioned earlier, we will talk some zoning ordinance again with city council. The 27th of, or excuse me, also on the 27th of October, we're going to be presenting a contract for a consultant to update our ADA transition plan. That's a federal requirement that we do that. It's been a long time, so we're going to start embarking on that process as well. And then, finally, in November, we'll be looking to update new building and fire codes to adhere to new state codes. So, that's some other work that we're touching on that we won't necessarily be involved in, but they're land use issues.
Keeping you busy.
Plenty busy.
So, before we move on to commissioner communications, do we want to talk about another meeting date separate from our next meeting?
If you'd like to. It doesn't look like we're going to really have time tonight to get into anything. The other dates, should the commission desire, we could meet on October 20th, which is a Thursday, and November 7th, which I believe is a...
Monday?
Monday.
Those days are available if the commission would like to schedule a special meeting there.
So, I will be gone for both of those dates. I'm leaving on the 16th of October. I return on the 20th of November, so carry on.
I'm sorry, what was the second date? The first one was October 20th?
November 7th.
I'm also gone both of those days.
There we go.
And I'm gone for one of them.
I think we'll see you November 3rd, regular meeting.
Correct. Okay.
I would like to just mention to the rest of the commissioners that I went through the glossary and had some additions, that there were some definitions that were much more limiting and broader definitions in our existing code than we have in the new code. And I've passed those on to staff, so I don't know if you can put those in some kind of format and give them a look at them before the November meeting.
Yeah, and thank you for doing that. I would encourage the other commissioners, if you do have, you know, more minor edits that you find, pass them along to staff, and we'll make those changes, unless we think they're really big policy issues. And then, we'll make sure that we highlight them when we do come back and say, you know, person comments, here's some other changes we made, and get the consent of the full commission.
And I'll make an appointment to come in and see staff next week, and I'll sort of go over some of the issues I have, and we probably can resolve them, and I'll be a happy camper.
Any other commissioner comments?
Do we want to spend a little bit of time on the zoning map this evening before we close? I think, just to highlight issues, or do you want to make those comments to me separately? I know a few of them were brought up earlier, but...
You all are welcome to do that. I actually, as I mentioned, I need to leave. I've got a...
You've got a grandbaby.
I got a grandbaby.
Good for you. And I believe Commissioner Westman was wanting to comment on the zoning map, or is there other concerns or...
We talked about a few comments with staff. I think at this point, those are the only ones that I'm aware of, and I would just check on what's on the general plan for the one that's on Capitola Road that I believe is a phone facility, not a public facility.
And I'm comfortable that all of the ones that I identified have been noted, so we'll bring those back in November.
Anybody else want to talk about the zoning map, or are you comfortable with...
The zoning map or getting into the zoning, so you're not suggesting that?
No, I think, yeah, I think she was talking about...
Just the map, okay.
We're reaching our nine o'clock witching hour.
We're here for you. We're going to get this done, aren't we?
I agree.
Well, you know, I have to, I have to say, I watched the city council, and they went longer than we've ever gone, and...
It gets goofy.
Well, it just, it doesn't seem like when you get towards the end of it that they're, you're really thinking straight, much less talking.
I'm not sure how you just, you just said about the city council there.
That's on record.
That's okay.
I'm cool, whatever, whatever. I'm fine.
Okay, then, do I have a motion for adjournment?
We need to continue to...
Continue to November 3rd.
We're going to continue the adjourn our regular meeting, but continue...
We have the motion to continue the wireless, and I think we're finally set.
So, we can stick with our original continuance of the...
So, we need a motion...
We made a motion...
We need a regular meeting.
We did make a motion to continue our special meeting prior to the planning meeting, so our regularly scheduled meeting, so we should be good with that, right?
Just for clarity, I think we should say continue to November 3rd.
Let's just do everything. How about we make a motion to adjourn our regularly scheduled meeting and continue our special meeting?
So moved.
I'll second that.
We have a motion.
Won't you have a special meeting on the 6:00 PM?
At 6:00 PM, yes. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Adjourned, thank you.